All right, good morning, Mayor and Council. My apologies for breaking the Internet last week. Again, I'm Andrew Jackson, the town's water manager, and I'll be presenting the North Water Treatment Plant's water quality along with strategies with my co-presenter, Engineering Project Supervisor Jean Jensen. Since I covered a third of the slides last week, I won't spend much time going through the level of detail that I covered on the slides you saw. So instead, I'll touch on a few of the key points from some of the more important slides, so that we can move through the presentation to allow time for questions along the way. So if there aren't any initial questions, let's go ahead and begin. Next slide, please. Okay, so the Water Division has exhausted the toolbox of operational and facility optimization strategies at the North Water Treatment Plant to achieve compliance with drinking water standards and safe yield requirements. Are you guys getting a real bad echo? Yeah, I am using a headset. Okay, so a substantial investment is required for the North Water Treatment Plant. So just to recap, the definition of safe yield, as our Water Resources Manager Eric Brown discussed last week, the Groundwater Management Act requires municipal water providers to use renewable water supply to meet demands. And so groundwater can be used only if it's recharged back into the ground on a one-to-one basis. So that's because groundwater is not naturally renewable in the desert. So again, safe yield is when the amount of water pumped out of the ground is equal to the amount recharged. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is the outline of topics that will be covered this afternoon. Again, I'm not going to touch too heavily on these, as we'll be talking through them pretty extensively. Next slide, please. Okay, so now I'll jump into the framework of water quality compliance, if you can skip to the next slide. So I'll quickly touch on this timeline again, since this information frames our challenge pretty accurately. So as a reminder, in 2006, the EPA established new drinking water regulations for all community water systems to follow for regulatory compliance. In 2012, all community water systems were required to have measures in place to protect consumers from disinfection byproducts. So this is when the new compliance monitoring began. Currently in Gilbert, we have eight regulatory compliance sites. Those sites are sampled on a quarterly basis, and the results of these samples are provided to our regulatory agencies. The EPA has established maximum contaminant levels for each disinfection byproduct. So a running annual average for each compliance site is calculated to determine what the maximum contaminant level set for each water quality constituent. We also sample water throughout the distribution system at 150 sites that are geographically located throughout the town. So in years 2013 through 2016, Gilbert experienced three operational trigger exceedances. We weren't required to, or actually with those exceedances, we were required to conduct operational evaluations for each of those occurrences, and we were required to submit the reports to our regulatory agencies. The water quality constituent that triggered the exceedances was total trihalamethanes, also known as TTHMs. So again, TTHMs are a group of four chemicals formed along with other disinfection byproducts when chlorine is used to control the microbial contaminants in drinking water. And these contaminants react with naturally occurring organic and inorganic matter. So the maximum allowable annual average for TTHMs is 80 parts per billion. For those of you that remember, in 2017, the town experienced two TTHM violations in Zone 1 of our water distribution system. These violations were a combination of compounding issues that we are continually working to address. Also, a critical piece of equipment failed without notice, and that was one of the reasons why we had that high TTH reading at one of our compliance sites. In 2018, Gilbert's Integrated Water Resources Master Plan was updated. This is updated every five years, and the updated master plan reiterated the importance of putting measures in place to meet safe yield. So currently, due to water quality reasons, we use a ratio of about 65% surface water and 35% groundwater to supply our consumers. So we need to try to reduce groundwater usage from 35% to 10% annually, so that we can reduce that long-term structural deficit for stored water credits. As a result of the TTHM violations in 2017, the Water Division completed a first-ever water quality master plan. The master plan confirmed that the most profound water quality challenge facing Gilbert is compliance with the EPA's Stage 2 disinfection byproduct rule, specifically with respect to TTHM concentrations. Near the end of 2018 and the first half of 2019, the North Water Treatment Plant had a once-in-a-decade opportunity to go through a complete dryup, as our water provider SRP had to undertake major maintenance projects on their canal system. So we took advantage of this opportunity by initiating a full-scope condition assessment of the North Water Treatment Plant. Jean, the co-presenter here for this presentation, she will cover that in more detail in later slides. But that effort evaluated all of the current facilities and the equipment for condition, level of service, risk of failure, and when we need to replace critical pieces of equipment. In terms of the census, when Gilbert's population officially exceeds 250,000 residents, we must redistribute the eight existing compliance locations to 12 locations that represent the areas in Gilbert that have the highest TTHM results. And so as I mentioned last week, the water quality results that we've attained at the existing eight compliance sites versus the 150 locations that we've been sampling over the last couple of years have shown that the existing compliance locations no longer represent the highest TTHM concentrations, and that redistributing the sites will present a regulatory compliance challenge. So this also means that the running annual average at each of those 12 sites will start from scratch. And so if any of the sites are above the maximum contaminant level set by the EPA, it'll cause an instant violation that will require public notice, similar to the notices that went out in 2017. Next slide, please. Okay, so again, these are the heat maps that show the last three years of quarter-three TTHM compliance testing. As I mentioned, the areas above the black line, those areas are influenced by the North Water Treatment Plant. So the yellow, orange, and red pockets around town are where we have the most profound challenges with TTHM formation and water age. And so you'll notice the area below the black line, that's serviced by the San Tan Vista Water Treatment Plant, not nearly as many challenges in that particular area. Next slide, please. Okay, and if you can click two times. Thank you. So this is a look at the quarter-three data from the previous slide. Each of the lines represents one of the 150 sampling points where we took samples. The green lines represent our current eight compliance sites, and those sites are sampled on a quarterly basis per regulatory requirements. You'll notice that a third of our sites rise above the TTHM maximum contaminant level, and the current sites, the eight sites that we have, are continuing to fall below the MCL. And that's a direct result of the work that we've been doing over the last couple of years to optimize our system in those areas. So we continue to work towards optimization for the remaining sites that fall above the MCL, so that TTHM MCL, that 80 parts per billion. But we're now at a point where we've exhausted all of the tools in our toolbox. And so, as I mentioned in the prior slide, 2022 is when we'll be redistributing, when that takes place. And so if you can click one more time, please. The orange lines represent what this redistribution will look like moving forward once we have 12 compliance sites. And so it's not proportional, it's based on the highest risk in the water distribution system. So water age, historical data, and representative geographical separation is how those new sites will be redistributed. Next slide, please. Okay, so now I'm going to touch again on the water resources implications. Next slide. So I want to touch on the variability of the source water that we experience with water delivered by SRP. The graphic on the right illustrates the watershed area for both the Salt and Verde River watersheds. And so, as you'll notice, we get water from three different sources from SRP. We get water from Salt River, the Verde River, and they also provide us with well water. All three of those sources have different challenges. And historically, water challenges were seasonal, however, with the catastrophic wildfires and droughts, recent droughts in recent years, and the intensified wet and dry cycles. We're now seeing changes on the water source, sometimes even on a daily basis, but quite frequently on a weekly basis. Additionally to note, the North Water Treatment Plant was not designed at a time that had very volatile water. So it was designed for the water quality at its time. Next slide, please. Okay, so just to recap on this, in December of 2019, there was an 18-month assessment that was completed to determine the health of the Verde River watershed. And the assessment was coordinated with 16 different agencies. So this report card looked at a number of indicators to determine the overall condition of the Verde River watershed. Overall, the watershed received a C+, however, the concern that continues to surface and continues to be the realm that we live in is the water quality certainty of the watershed. So you'll see that water quality certainty received the only F rating of all of the indicators that were evaluated for this report card. So this result again is a, or the rating was a result of the prior catastrophic fires in the watershed in recent years. And the quality of the watershed just continues to be a problem. So agencies across the valley that receive water for treatment purposes from these water sources have essentially been told by SRP that we need to put measures in place to address the water quality concerns. And many of those agencies already have technologies in place. Gilbert, Chandler, and Tempe, we're three of the agencies that have, in recent years, have had TTHM violations. And so we're the remaining cities who are working to find long-term to meet water quality compliance. And so as I mentioned last week, Chandler and Tempe, they're currently working on multimillion-dollar projects to ensure compliance for themselves in the future. Phoenix has also taken the same measures as well. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is the slide that broke the Internet. So next, I'll discuss the water resources impacts and implications. Currently, the North Water Treatment Plant is unable to treat the full SRP allocation. And this is due to the challenges with disinfection byproduct compliance and the North Water Treatment Plant's facility design limitations. So as I mentioned in previous slides, the summer poses our toughest challenges as it relates to TTHM formation. And this is due to high total organic carbons, TOCs, which are highly reactive to chlorine disinfection. Ironically, when SRP provides a blend of groundwater to help reduce the concentration, the high concentrations of TOCs, it creates further challenges at the North Water Treatment Plant, since the plant wasn't designed to treat water with low setability. And so we've literally had to shut the plant down a few times to prevent regulatory violations in recent years. And thankfully, there were no major impacts of those shutdowns. But this chart that we're looking at shows a seven-year differential between the SRP water that's available to the town that was purchased but unused. And you'll see that the seven-year average of unused water is around 7,200 acre-feet per year. And so the reason we're not able to use water, this water, ties directly into our ability to maintain regulatory compliance. So we must draw on our groundwater sources to blend the water in order to achieve regulatory compliance. This is where that 35% groundwater usage occurs and will basically continue to occur if we continue to operate long-term in this fashion. So there is a hidden cost to this current practice of, one, not utilizing the already-paid SRP renewable supply through the North Water Treatment Plant, and, two, just meeting unmet demands through wells that recover expensive groundwater credits. This cost is hidden because Gilbert has acquired the substantial inventory of groundwater credits that's used for periods of drought. And that's when renewable supplies are limited. So we're currently drawing on this source during times of abundance. And we'll need to replace that source at a steep price in the future if the current practice continues. Next slide, please. So this is a brief analysis of that financial impact associated with not being able to utilize that 7,200 acre-feet of water each year. As mentioned, the water is purchased, however, it's unused. So the cost to replenish this source would be substantial, and estimates range between $250 to $700 per acre-foot. So that equates to about $1.8 to $4.9 million in cost to the long-term storage credit that the town has. And the next slide's going to dive into that a little bit deeper. Okay, so many of you are familiar with the chart on the left. This chart came out of the Integrated Water Resources Master Plan update. This chart indicates having a balanced water resource portfolio, given the full use of all of the available resources. And so the orange, gray, and yellow bars indicate existing and future usage between the four zones that we serve, and that's through build-out. We have enough, just enough, water with the full use of all of the available resources. But the shaded background shows the amount of available water existing today through the various resources in our portfolio. So you'll see SRP, RWCD, CAP, groundwater, and the planned CAP leases. The chart on the right shows the structural deficit placed on the town, shall we not be able to fully utilize our available resources. So that 7,000 acre-feet of unused water will cause negative impacts to our water resources portfolio, and more specifically, on our long-term storage credits. So you'll see between the years 2020 and roughly 2030, the town will need to acquire an additional water source to ensure that the portfolio maintains balance. And so investments to secure water are extremely expensive and take many years to negotiate. Our most recent lease was with the San Carlos Apache Tribe, and that cost around $31 million to secure 6,000 acre-feet annually for the next 100 years. That number can easily double in the next five to 10 years, as water leases are becoming more difficult to find and procure. Next, our Engineering Project Supervisor Jean Jensen will discuss the North Water Treatment Plant condition assessment. So if we can go to the next slide, please.
Good morning, everybody. I'm excited to get to this part of the presentation. So hopefully Andrew's done a great job kind of setting up the background on water quality and our resources. And we're going to kind of talk about how those things actually move forward and.
Jean, your mic is cutting in and out.
Okay, sorry about that. Is that a little bit better?
Yes, thank you.
Great. So the one of the things that Andrew referenced was we've done a number of studies and projects for the North Water Treatment Plant. Take a look at what that facility's capabilities are with regard to the variable water quality and the water resources that we're seeing. What we ended up doing was taking an opportunity to do a water quality master plan. And so this water quality master plan was intended to take the perspective of, given the variable water quality that we see, what opportunities do we have to go ahead and adjust that facility, make the equipment that's already there, or the chemical systems that are already on-site, or could be reasonably modified, and make those changes to meet our water quality needs. So the data that you see on this chart here, you'll see a bunch of different colored dots and triangles. And what each one of those represents is a different bench test effort that was completed to determine what opportunities existed with different chemical dosages. Unfortunately, despite doing well over 25 or 30 different combinations of the various pieces of equipment on-site, we found only one sampling condition that was actually able to meet that. But it was kind of our bookend attempt. We ended up trying kind of a kitchen sink approach. That kitchen sink approach ended up being the model that would have taken our existing coagulant systems, our pH systems, and restoring our powdered activated carbon. That powdered activated carbon system would have, has been offline for quite a while. So those combination of conditions are actually outside of the operating conditions of the facility. Those would include taking our coagulant dosage, which is an aluminum-based product, and running it at five times what we currently operate it at, adjusting pH. So one of the ways you can improve organics removal is by reducing the overall water pH. Unfortunately, the pH that we found that would have been productive would have also caused damage to the concrete and metal structures of the facility. And then again, also adding powdered activated carbon, which is a system that's not currently available but is on-site. So unfortunately, that combination of scenarios, although it got us into our target range, actually resulted in what would be a plant-wide failure. Next up, we took a look at the facility condition itself. So a couple of just important details as we go looking forward. The plant had, at this point, been online since 1996. It was originally constructed by Mingus Constructors. Mingus was a contractor that went out of business in the early 2000s, and it was constructed under low-bid construction models. This plant actually came online prior to, came online prior to alternative construction being available. And that was made available in 2000, so it wasn't that there was an alternative and we didn't pursue it. It was that the alternative that was available didn't show up for another few years. So what that resulted in is that the contractor is not a part of the discussion. Contractor is not part of the designer conversation. But that also results in an illimitated ability to do construction inspection sophistication. So we didn't have some of the technologies with regards to laser and 3D modeling. We didn't have some of the technologies with regards to onsite evaluations of different types of materials. So it really resulted in a combination of factors that maybe led to some construction challenges that we find later as we do the condition assessment. Again, the treatment plant did come online prior to some of the water quality changes that have been so dramatic, going ahead and moving with the fires and the droughts, as well as the flashier wet-dry cycling. So the facility really focused on sort of a slow and steady approach to water treatment. The plant takes about 24 hours to treat that drop of water, whereas now we're seeing water changes very, very rapidly. That's not what the facility was designed to handle. So those things, providing some historical context, were used as a part of the consideration for why we conducted the facility condition assessment. In addition to that, we had a once-in-a-decade or once-in-a-20-year-period opportunity because SRP did a full-system dryup. Those dryups are pretty unusual because we typically still have some amount of water in the canal. And in addition to having that historic dryup, we had an opportunity, because we had just finished bringing the San Tan Plant online, we were able to support Zones 1 and 2 with water from San Tan and the wells, which allowed us to take that plant down long enough to actually put both people and equipment into systems that had been underwater for more than 20 years. So with those pieces in mind, we made the investment in doing the condition assessment overall. Slide, please. Next slide. So the plant was constructed in a number of phases. The first came online in 1996. Then the plant was expanded in 2001 and 2006. And just as a reminder, that would have all been before the new EPA regulations that we're currently facing today. So the plant was absolutely brought online in a different water.
Jean, I'm sorry to interrupt you. You're doing a wonderful job. It's just a little part that you're, about every third word. I wonder if you can get me this with your mic. Is there a headset on right now?
She has an iPhone headset.
Yeah, I've got a headset on. I'm going to try disconnecting. Any better?
We'll need to hear you talk a little bit to see if that's better.
I've got another set, I'll try. Switching, I actually have a backup that's on, but we'll try to.
Keep talking.
Yep, keep talking.
Of course, there's got to be something. So anyway, so as I was mentioning, the facility was constructed in four separate phases. Those phases all were designed and brought online prior to the new EPA regulations in 2006, and then the implementation of those regulations later on. So what we wanted to make sure was, what had those buried structures and those underwater structures, how had they matured over the last 25 years? And as a part of that condition assessment, we evaluated nearly every structure and facility within the North Plant and identified more than 35 capital projects recommended to be implemented over 10 years with a $70-million price tag. And the important takeaway from that is that those $70 million in investments that are recommended are entirely structural. None of these investments would actually improve the operation of the facility. It's a matter of keeping the structures sound and keeping the structures in good working order, not necessarily being able to address the water quality challenges. One interesting piece that did come out of it was a comment from the firm that did our condition assessment, noting that the maintenance efforts on-site had been tremendous. That was one of the reasons the facilities were still operating and still functioning the way that they were, was that the maintenance had been done well. That said, the key point for why we set off so much construction quality issue was the, in general, the construction quality itself did not meet what we'd be using as our current standards. So that results in a higher-than-industry standard repair and replacement. So a water treatment plant is no different than any other capital investment. The, that capital investment requires some amount of investment from year to year, and that year-to-year investment ends up being something more along the lines of, you know, 1% to 2%, just like you would take a car in for an oil change. I guess, I guess we're having some volume issues again. I guess I'm going to try switching to just my laptop mic and see what happens.
I might be better if you can keep your voices close to the mic as possible on the laptop.
I'm trying. I've got two sets of headphones here and. I'm, I'm trying. I don't have a, I've got two sets of headphones here and. All right, is this any?
It's really the consistency of your voice that we're having on my mic. It's going up and down and up and down. So every third bird sounds like a whisper. And then you go back to a normal volume. So it's, there's, there's gonna be either movement or it's the quality of the mic.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I've had an issue with these headsets before. So we'll have to, uh, see if maybe this works a little bit.
Yeah, it's, it's, maybe, maybe anytime you're turning your head. I don't know. I wish we could see you. We can.
I'm sitting stock still doing.
Yeah, we can, we can try to like.
All right. So hopefully, um, hopefully this helps a little bit. I'm gonna start this slide over again just to make sure you guys caught what you needed. But, um, so just quickly, just a reminder, the facility was constructed in four phases. We did that condition assessment. Um, and one of the biggest takeaway was that because of the construction quality issues, we are seeing a continual reinvestment in the facility. That would be in excess of our, what we would typically see for an industry standard or. So think more like, um, so you bought a car and you would expect to do an oil change. You would expect to, fire rotations, air filter changes. Um, but in this case, you picked up a car that's got a little bit more of a, a lemon quality. So we have been investing in that facility at a rate that's above the industry standard. When we talk about that within the context of LRIP, what we end up finding is that this facility over its lifespan, would cost the town thirty-seven and fifty million dollars additional, um, capital investment. That would be in addition to the amount booked in as a standard. So that's, it's an important bookend for us to discuss, um, because it does play into the larger, um, the larger efforts.
Hey Jean, I'm gonna send you the call-in information and we'll just have you call in on your phone.
All right.
For me. All right, I'll email you now.
I can't win.
So I think Jean covered all of the, uh, details that we wanted to cover on that slide. So we can go to the next slide, please.
Can you go ahead?
Andrew, are you there?
Yes.
Andrew, uh, Bill's gonna have a question.
I am, I am having a very hard time hearing the question.
Bill, is your loud voice and the, yeah.
All right. Can you hear me now? How about that?
Uh, that's better.
Okay. Uh, I saw something about extreme pH adjustments. So what do you, what do we talk about for pH? Uh, when we were speaking, what's this?
Okay, that, it was extremely choppy. I am so sorry. Uh, still having a real hard time. I, I, I heard a question centered around pH adjustments. But I didn't hear quite the question.
I changed the setting. How am I sounding?
Bill, pop up and just get closer to the speaker.
Yeah. Andrew, can you hear me any better?
Yes.
Okay, I, I fixed the setting, I think.
Okay, what was the question again?
You, you're talking about extreme pH adjustments, uh, and from my own background information, what is, uh, what are we?
And that cut out again.
Talk next to your laptop.
Oh, well, that's the speaker. So.
That's the speaker? And that's the mic.
Yeah, yeah.
We just changed it.
Okay, is Jean on the line?
Maybe.
Okay. Yeah. So the, the extreme pH adjustment, the range is, uh, below six point O. So that puts it in a acidic range. Which will essentially eat through all the concrete structures.
Uh, and, and that was, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, it's a little echoey, but I can hear you.
Okay. And, and that's kind of the concern I have. I'm, as we do these extreme pH adjustments, and you're talking about the corrosion through a system, it's predominantly carbon steel from what I'm seeing. Uh, do we run any kind of impressed cathodic protection system in there or passive, uh, corrosion controls, sacrificial anodes? And are, what are we, what are we doing for corrosion controls as we have these, uh, pH out of a, out of the band for, uh, carbon steel?
So, great question. Thank you. Um, so those were only bench tests that were done. We never actually ran the system that low, uh, because of the need for corrosion control. Um, so we didn't want to put the, the plant in a condition that we were gonna cause catastrophic failure.
Okay, um, probably questions for a later time. Just to put it on, on your plate, I'd like to talk about, uh, the effects of your chlorine injection and corrosion controls. And as that would affect our long-term assessments for, um, the distributions of both the plants and, uh, any place that we don't have, well, it could increase the corrosion rates and increase or minimize the, uh, the longevity of our.
Yeah, and absolutely. Thank you for that feedback. Um, that, that is what we've been doing. So we've been looking at enhancing, uh, the way that we use our coagulants, our, uh, chemical dosing. Um, because we have to make sure that, you know, uh, you make one adjustment, it creates other cause and effect issues. And so, um, it's a fine balance and that's why a lot of these tests are done in a, in a bench, a bench top test type atmosphere. Um, so that we're not causing disturbances that end up making it out to our distribution system.
Okay. And is a, is a cathodic protection system something that we are using or evaluating as part of this process?
I'm gonna push pause on that because we need to get to the financial component of that. I agree, this is an important conversation, but you guys are speaking about eighteen award degrees that are coming right now. And then the point of this is the financial component. And so we will get like, there is gonna be an amazing tour for you, Bill. You're gonna eat it up. But for right now, I'm like, we're gonna put you in a scuba suit and you're gonna go do some exploring. I heard we have a tribute for you, Andrew.
Awesome. Um, if we can get to the next slide, please. Okay, so, uh, this is just a summation of the efforts that were taken by the division to date. So we touched through, uh, most of these already. Uh, ozone study. So the ozone is, um, has been identified as a critical step in the treatment process for controlling DBP formation. Um, the ozone unit that we have is reaching the end of its useful life. And so, uh, we're at a point where we're gonna have to make a investment, um, or consider making an investment on that piece of equipment. Uh, we've, as I mentioned, we've done, uh, a copious amount of small-scale column test, uh, in, in-house pilot testing. And so we've, we've done a lot of different things at the plant so that we can look for optimization. Just for oper- operational improvements, as I mentioned, enhance coagulation. Uh, we just replaced, uh, several of the filter under drains. And recently installed TTHM aeration equipment inside, uh, one of the finished water reservoirs on that site. Uh, and we also have distribution system aeration installed at critical sites currently and projects that are underway to add additional, uh, equipment throughout the distribution system. So next, I'll discuss the alternatives that were evaluated as part of the process to address the long-term remedies at the North Water Treatment Plant. So next slide, please. And one more. Okay, so if you wanna go ahead and just click five times, please. I think this will get us where we need to be. Thank you. Okay, so as we closely vetted out all of the alternatives available to achieve, uh, water quality objectives while protecting groundwater credits, we wanted to identify which solutions were not only viable, uh, but which ones would maximize the public's trust and keep Gilbert out of the news for continuing water quality issues. We also vetted, uh, which option was the most cost-effective and which had the shortest compliance horizon. Meaning, uh, when we construct new technology and processes, or if we build an all-new treatment plant, uh, what alternative could we deliver, uh, the most expeditiously to shorten that compliance concern? So I'll be addressing the financial figures, um, or actually Jean will in an upcoming slide, but you'll notice that one alternative met all of the criteria needed to have a path forward while we had a close runner-up that also emerged. Um, so if we start at the top, uh, maintaining the facility is only going to address the structural issues as Jean identified as part of that, uh, condition assessment that was completed. So if we were only to focus on these needs, we would be faced with the inability to meet regulatory compliance, uh, in the very near future. We looked at finished water treatment, uh, which would add an additional process train to the current treatment process. Um, hope there's not an echo there. But, so this process would address the water quality challenges we, we face right now and into the future, but it would not address our continuous need to pump groundwater and deplete our stored water credits. So it'll continue to erode the public's trust as we are not going to be in a good, uh, position to, uh, reserve our, our water resources. And it's not the most cost-effective option long-term. The existing plant improvements, that encapsulates, um, adding both pre and post-treatment processes and structures, uh, to the current facility. While, uh, addressing all of the, the structural concerns that Jean had identified, that seventy million. So you will see that this option checks most of the boxes and is one of the more cost-effective options. But the compliance horizon is much lengthier and I'm gonna be explaining that compliance horizon on a future slide. But, if you're trying to construct new facilities and coordinate critical shuts, uh, shutdowns to bring new systems online, you can only do that on a seasonal basis. And so no major work could take place in the summer, uh, that would require the plant to be shut down for several days. And just based on the condition of the plant, um, shutdowns would likely be longer than anticipated just because of the unknowns that would likely surface, uh, with more destructive and reconstructive activities. The membrane treatment technology was vetted and meets three of the five parameters. Uh, however, that was the most costly alternative. And so that one pretty much worked itself out. Uh, distribution system management is not an effective option since it will continue to eat through our groundwater credits and does not check any of the boxes other than to simply achieve water quality objectives. And we also looked at a regional partnership solution that would tie, uh, an interconnect between agencies such as Chandler Mesa. But that would not work either, uh, specifically because Chandler has some of the same challenges that we have. Next slide, please. And so next, next I'm gonna talk about that mitigation compliance horizon strategies. So all of the identified alternatives on the previous slide, um, will take beyond twenty twenty-two to implement. And so the below approaches will need to be implemented between, uh, twenty twenty-two and when the new alternatives are able to come online. Um, and so these would be in place during our toughest compliance months, which are typically, uh, between May and October. So we've identified the need to install a minimum of sixteen auto flushing devices. Uh, that's what's pictured on the screen right here. So these devices essentially flush fresh water to waste into the, the sewer system and would help to reduce water age and of our distribution system. Uh, deploying these devices would have upfront cost of around ten thousand dollars per device. And as I mentioned earlier, um, this is not a sustainable option, but, uh, cause it'll continue to impact our long-term storage credits. Uh, groundwater blending will continue to be a practice during the compliance horizon as it's, it's likely that we're gonna stay around thirty-five percent until the selected solution is available to come online. Um, Jean's gonna be talking a little bit about those solutions and the time in which it'll take to bring either of the, uh, two solutions online. That were the ones that we vetted out as being the two viable solutions. Uh, zone split valves will be used in a way in which, uh, we can continue to operate our zones to introduce water into other zones to help blend water sources. Um, so as you're looking at the combined, uh, DBP mitigation strategy, we're looking at, uh, roughly about almost a six million dollar a year cost to our long-term storage credit. Additional operational costs will have non-revenue water. So that's the water that's flushed through the, uh, auto flushing units. That's about close to six hundred thousand a year. And then the, uh, water wastewater treatment of that water being flushed down the sewer system at a, an additional hundred and twenty thousand a year. And so this is the mitigation strategy, um, that will be in place for two years, uh, as that new process or treatment plant comes online. Next slide, please. Okay, so the mitigation efforts are likely to reduce the frequency of compliance challenges in the impacted zones, uh, during alternative construction. Caveat unlikely to reduce. And so we, we obviously are continuing to, uh, work through identifying where we need to install auto flushers. If we need to install twenty of them, we are. We don't wanna be in a point where we're gonna be in violation. Violations don't carry a direct financial impact, um, from an, from a regulatory agency in terms of fees or fines. But you have the potential for liability concerns that, that can come up in addition to the erosion of public trust. And impacts to development and growth. And so obviously these, these, uh, mitigation strategies are extremely important uh, to make sure that we have these in place. And as I mentioned, we're working diligently right now, uh, to identify where these auto flushers need to go in at. We've already installed, um, quite a few of them already. Ongoing violations, if we were to have violations, um, TTHM violations would result in a consent order from the EPA. And this is where financial penalties could be possible, but a- at this point, we're not worried about being in that realm. Um, but obviously we're gonna have to, uh, do a lot of community outreach and education. Have that be a focal point as we try to make it through this, uh, compliance horizon. Next slide, please. All right, and next slide. Okay.
All right, Andrew.
Yes, go ahead.
Does that help a little bit?
You sound great.
Okay, so we're on headphone slash microphone set three. Hopefully that gets us where we need to be. Um, so this slide here focuses on the timeline. The timeline is meant to kind of walk us through where we are, which is that orange, April twenty twenty, as well as the, um, upcoming deadlines and timepieces that go with it. So right now we're hanging out in April twenty twenty. We're presenting to council here our financial retreat. And then we're gonna be moving into the period where the census data could impact our overall expectations and what our rules could look like. Which is part of why we're here today and trying to walk through the alternative options. So from here, we would be moving to a detailed alternatives analysis. Up till now, we've taken the various components and packages and moved them forward. And we have compiled that, which is what's brought us to this presentation. So once we finish up with the census, we'll be moving into the new compliance reporting period, which starts in, this, this number's a little bit speculative, but late twenty twenty-one calendar year. And then the new compliance monitoring period would begin in January of twenty twenty-two. So hopefully, um, this kind of timeline zooms in on that larger picture that Andrew had presented at the very beginning of the presentation. And so we'll hop to the next slide. So the first alternative that Andrew covered, which was improvements at the existing plant, would result in some challenges with regards to. would result in some challenges with regards to timeline. This is simply because constructing at an existing facility is a very challenging circumstance under ideal conditions. So we're definitely struggling with a facility that has a lot of unknown structural components. We did do that condition assessment, which identified a number of challenges. But obviously, it doesn't give us the same perspective with regards to some of the more difficult to access structures. We obviously didn't go underneath foundations. We didn't tear into pipes. We went into the pipes and we did non destructive analysis. But anytime we were going to cut into the existing plant to put in improvements, we would have a risk period with regards to how long that plant could take that outage and how long it might take to bring that facility back to a point where it could operate. So particularly because we'd be looking at making modifications to both the front and the back of the plant, which don't really have the same opportunities for parallel operation. We would end up with a pretty long implementation period between when we anticipate needing to comply with the new EPA tier one monitoring or the new 12 sites. And when we would have access to the new treatment technologies, which is speculated as being the last quarter of calendar year 2025. So if we can hop to the next slide. The alternative that we're presenting here would be full facility reconstruction. So we actually have a parcel of property immediately adjacent to the existing plant that is dedicated for retention of that facility. So it's a it's a parcel that was set aside as a part of the original construction. And it was designed to take the retention water so the whole plant could come offline and via the duct system that's on the side, take that water to that retention basin and store it in the event there was a challenge. So that property allows us an opportunity to construct a new facility with minimal interruption to the existing facility and potentially no interruption whatsoever. So that timeline definitely makes a big difference with regards to that implementation period. And any alternative we pursued fully, we'd be looking at opportunities to reduce the impact between construction and substantial completion. There's a number of options that would allow us to bring some technologies potentially online early that could even reduce these windows further. But this is a conservative estimate as opposed to why that timeline is important. Next slide, please. So next up is budget impacts. As you probably are aware, North Water Treatment Plant has had a number of investments over the years. And it continues to require additional investments to keep that facility in good working order. So next slide. So some, just some bookends for this discussion because we wanted to make sure that we understood that the facility has to stay online during construction irrespective of which alternative we pursue. So the condition assessment identified a handful of projects that were extremely high risk and had the opportunity to potentially bring the facility offline with little or a minimal warning. So we definitely have undertaken some of those projects in the interim. Those projects total out to about $12 million in immediate structural repairs. And those alternatives have to be constructed irrespective of which alternative we pursued. And then again, just a reminder, as we talked about during the condition assessment slides that you may or may not have been able to hear. We have additional long range infrastructure investments in the existing facility that would be higher than the industry standard. Those costs are built in to the model that we presented on in the subsequent slides here. But we just wanted to make sure that we brought that back again, that there's some costs associated with maintaining the existing facility that are in excess of industry standard. Also a caveat, all the costs that we've developed are industry best standards or based on similar national projects. They're based on staff estimates. We actually have spent no time and no investments at this point with external engineering estimates. That's kind of the next step which comes out of that staff recommendation, which is that we need to pursue additional refinement on these numbers. Some of the challenges specific to the site, some of the challenges specific to our construction market as well as the rate impacts are all the questions that we're going to need to fully vet. So that would be where that recommendation comes in. Also, staff is strongly recommending that as a part of this larger project, the design focus that we would be taking would be identifying efficiencies, cost management strategies, and making the facility more flexible, more responsive in the future so that we aren't in a situation where the facility, as we move forward, ends up in a similar corner with regards to not being able to pivot to meet all of the new technology expectations. So if we can go to next slide, please. This is where I stand back and hope that the gasp isn't too loud, but we do have a number of things we need to walk through on this slide with regards to numbers. One of the biggest things is that we took a long range infrastructure perspective on this slide. The existing plant improvements would be the addition of some upfront systems, some sort of pre sedimentation system that could handle both the high turbidity, the wildfire runoff, the high organics materials that we get depending on seasonality, as well as a backend system in the form of a post filter contactor, which is a complicated way of saying we would be putting a granulated activated carbon filtration system after the existing filters. Then there's some ancillary improvements that would go with that because of the footprint that it would take up. So what you see here is we go from left to right on that first first row of alternative is we have that immediate necessary structural repair, $12 million. It's actually shown in both alternatives because those pieces move forward either way. The existing facility repair is 95 million. That's inclusive of the condition assessment based projects, the other condition structural challenges that we've identified, as well as that overall increased long term investment. We would also be looking at an $80 million investment to address the water quality. That's the improvements that I mentioned kind of at the beginning of the slide, the post filter contactor, as well as the pre sedimentation system. That pre sedimentation system has a dual use in reducing our overall groundwater use by allowing us to have more of that SRP allocation, ideally all of it coming through the facility. And then there's an ongoing operations component that's an increased overall cost because the alternatives that are available to us while using the existing plant have some cost implications that are above what we would be anticipating under a new facility construction. Mainly, the facility was constructed with a particular layout of various structures. In order to put in new facilities, we would have to add some pumping, add some additional chemical usages. And what that looks like over 40 years is an overall investment of $285 million. And going down to the full facility reconstruction, looking at building that treatment plant on the adjacent parcel, we eliminate a big chunk of that existing facility repair and we reduce the overall ongoing operations cost impacts because we can more efficiently design that system to not require the additional pumping, to not use some of the chemical restrictions that we would have at the existing facility. So that 40 year extended cost is $273 million. Next slide, please. This, this slide was sort of a, an initial estimate based on conversations with our budget group on how we would allocate the costs specifically for the new facility and how that funding would actually look. I would defer to Kelly for any specifics in terms of what the water rate increase would be inclusive of. But my understanding is it would be both the project as well as some of the other water department needs. But I want to make sure that I defer to her for that understanding.
Yes, it's everything that would be needed in order to balance the five year plan within revenues and expenditures.
Okay, so that Kelly is just confirming that that number does include our our overall needs as well as this specific project in general. Next slide, please. So from here, that conversation that I mentioned earlier. So we have an initial alternatives evaluation that needs to be pursued. But we also would need to do that in parallel with a rate study effort. So we're sitting in spring of 2020 and we're looking at kind of getting some direction with regards to which option to move forward. And then with that, we would need to complete a rate study and then develop a timeline from there as to that rate implementation and the bond implications that come with it. Next slide, please. And I'll go back to Andrew.
Thank you, Jean. All right, if we can proceed to the next slide, please. All right, so this is our recommendation and next steps as well as a recap. So as we mentioned, we have ongoing changes to the watershed. Those changes are persistent and they're worsening. The current treatment facility is not designed or currently able to manage the the ebb and flow of the water quality challenges that we have over there. All communities that are served by this watershed are also impacted. And so as I mentioned, this is not just unique to Gilbert, but many of the surrounding agencies are putting mitigation efforts in place to address these ongoing challenges. The facility has optimized and attempted all of the available approaches. So we're unable to meet the objectives as that current plant is designed, constructed and configured. So we we vetted out those seven alternatives. Full facility reconstruction minimizes that exposure in terms of that compliance horizon that that I discussed earlier. So it's the least long term construction risk and least liability risk on the town. Next slide, please. So staff recommends replacement of the North Water Treatment Plant. The new facility, as Jean mentioned, would be built on a Gilbert owned parcel that's immediately adjacent to the existing plant, just to the east. There still needs to be some additional site considerations that we need to investigate a little bit further. But it'll be designed constructed with future compliance and changing water quality in mind. So the immediate is that we need to advertise for a basis of design and CMR and select a firm to help us to validate the major design choices to tighten up that budget so that we have more accurate budget numbers and to outline and identify what that operation and maintenance would look like. Additionally, they would help with the constructability and sequencing so that we can further reduce that timeline. So we're recommending that we complete a rate study for FY21, FY22. Next slide, please. And so the ask for today is for council, council, mayor and council to provide us direction to proceed with the rate study and direction to proceed with the basis of design.
So just to clarify, Andrew, the rate study is going to take in the assumption that we are moving forward with the construction of a new facility.
That is correct, Mayor.
So that's why the rate study is being requested at this point. It hasn't been too long since we did a rate study under current.
So we would do the study and it would take us a yearish to do.
Right.
And then it would be four years between when we implemented the last rate and when the new rate would be implemented.
So it's about the same time, the timelines that we want to be in anyway.
Yeah, it's a good amount of time. And if you recommend the rate study, obviously, we would recommend doing a new plant rather than throwing additional money towards the old one, an old one that has some significant issues. But if the direction of council is to do that, then we would do the rate study. We would still need the money for the repairs. So we can put the money towards repairs or we can put the money towards a new plant.
Okay.
Andrew, is the parcel you're talking about Nichols Park?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, is that programmed at all?
There have been a couple of different ideas over the years about partnering. Like there's been, but nothing that really came to fruition. And if you remember that Walgreens, that's on the corner where it actually sort of breaks up that site in a way that makes it a little bit difficult because the park would basically have to wrap around, like the parking would have to wrap around the Walgreens. So I actually think, and I don't know what the long term strategy is for the but that might be a different opportunity where you're just sort of swapping.
SDFs are system development fees. So when a, and I'm going to talk pretty fast. If I go too fast, slow me down. System development fees are when new businesses or houses join our community. They have to pay for their impact to our systems, to our police, our fire, our water, wastewater system so that we can provide them the services that our existing residents have already paid for over time and to be able to hold the system harmlessly. So we have several different types of system development fees. And we're going to go through each of them today and just do kind of a 30,000 foot look at what does the cash flow look like in each of these areas? Am I talking loud enough? In the traffic signal area. If we go to the roads area, this.
Kelly. I don't know about others, but I'm not able to hear Kelly at all.
Okay, hold on one second.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. I don't know why I dropped there. Started off fine.
All right, maybe I will just. Shall I just pull up a chair and sit right next to it? Is that helpful?
I think we, I think we may have fixed it.
You got it fixed?
Yeah, it was okay first off. Then you get to the good part.
We were trying to fix the settings. It blocked you out, so you're good to go.
Got it. So can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. Traffic signal, good news, looks good, no worries here. Roads SDF, new in 2020, so we have just an itty bitty bit of fun balance. We're looking to use that money on projects over the next few years. This is one of the areas that we'll need to look at doing a bond in order to be able to cash flow those projects because we don't have enough saved up to be able to work on those projects. And if we wait until all of the money comes in, then we're going to have to delay some of the road projects, which are critical to our infrastructure and would be detrimental if we delayed it. So I would like to look at doing a PFMPC bond, the Public Facilities Municipal Property incorporation bond. That doesn't help you. There are different types of bonds. This type has a citizen board that says yes or no and is able to issue those bonds as opposed to going on a ballot and having citizens do it with bonds that are paid back with property tax. So this would not be paid with property tax. It would be paid with the revenues from the system development fees that come in over time. And this is one of the ways that we could help finance these projects to be able to start them now and then have the cash come in as development happens. Questions on that? Okay. Police system development fees. So it has been positive, it's gone negative, it's gone back positive. So it's kind of gone up and down. We have some projects planned over the next few years. It will likely get really close to zero, probably with the actual cash flow of the project. We won't go below zero on this, but we'll continue to watch this one really closely. It's possible that we may need to come back to council and do a small amount of internal loan if the invoices come in a little bit faster than needed. But not too super worried about this one. It should flow with its cash flow all right over the next few years. On fire system development fees, we have built all of the fire stations that we planned to build. And so you can see that this went negative very far in the past and has been working to become positive. That was a strategic decision. This is doing exactly what we had anticipated it would do. Build all the stations, be ready for the people. And then as the final population comes in, they pay the general fund back for the amount that's borrowed here. So this has an internal loan with the general fund. It will likely become positive, you know, somewhere in the next 10ish years or so. But it's looking, making really good progress for this fund. The general governments, this is for libraries and some different infrastructure that is no longer allowed under system development fees. So we have debt associated with these projects. We're allowed to continue to charge the system development fee to pay back the existing debt that we have. And so the existing debt finishes here pretty soon. We'll finish paying off any of the negative balance in this fund. And then we'll be able to stop collecting the system development fee and not charge that into the future. And so that will be a good help to the community as soon as that rolls off, which should be in the next couple of years. And what do we use that money for? And what do we use that money for? Libraries, possibly.
One of them. We do, always glad to know. Before, it was before us. Yeah, but it's been
It was, it was 20 years ago. Park system development fees, we have been building up and then we were able to do the first phases of Gilbert Regional Park and Desert Sky Park. And so the fund balance came down. We'll continue to do additional park amenities. So this fund balance will go up and down as we have the inflows build up, the revenues build up, and then we build additional amenities and phases of the park. So this one looks good. Water system development fee is one of the areas that I want to talk to you about. We are going lower and lower over time. And then this is going to be similar to what you saw on the fire. We have a lot of infrastructure that we're putting into place on the water side that will help us build out. But we don't have all of our population yet, so it's likely that this will go negative. We're getting a little bit less revenue right now, about $7 million per year. Our existing debt service is about $9.8 million a year. So what we'd like to look at is we may need some possible water resource MPC. So same as public facilities, only for different types of projects, but the same idea where the system development fees would pay back the bonds, not property tax. So it would go to that board and not be put on the ballot. But a bond to help cash flow some of the projects that are planned there to better match the revenue cash flow with the project and the timing of when the new businesses and residents would come on and be using the infrastructure that we're building early to meet their demand and need that's projected into the future. It may, I've talked with our CIP group. It probably won't go negative in the current fiscal year just because we have budgeted. If they spent everything that was budgeted, it would go negative. But the projects have started, they're in progress, but won't spend all of the budgeted amount this year. So CIP thinks that we'll be all right for the cash flow on this year. We'll continue to watch that. If it does look like it would go negative in the current fiscal year or before we get a bond into place, a fiscal year before that happens, then we would need to come to council and talk about an internal loan to bridge that gap before we could get the bond funds for the projects. Any questions on that? Water resources is a similar story. We did the water resource buy about a year ago. And so our fund balance went negative. We were aware that that was going to happen. We did an internal loan with our water repair and replacement fund. So it will pay back the water R and R fund over time. We have additional water buys that we would like to consider in order to flesh out the portfolio that we need for full build out. When we get ready to execute those, that's where it goes a lot further negative in the gray in year 2023, around that time period. When we get ready to do those water buys, I would recommend that we do a bond for those rather than an internal loan. We just don't have a cash flow to be able to do that, especially with what we now know about the needs for the R and R cash flow at the North Water Treatment Plant and things that are going on there. So just a recommendation that we, whenever we're ready to pull the trigger on an additional water buy, that we would do a bond for that. Greenfield wastewater, it's, we've been building up fund balance just as the greenfield expansion has been going on. Now that that's really underway, we're starting to get more invoices on that. So we're going to see that fund balance come down. And then it will continue to be pretty balanced and come down over the future. So not worried about this area. On the Neely wastewater, we've been coming up. We have a few projects that are planned that will take the balance to zero. This area doesn't have any new projects that are planned. And so unless we find additional need in the Neely wastewater service area, as soon as we finish the projects that are currently on the books, we'll stop collecting any additional revenue, zero that out. And then we would stop collecting a Neely wastewater SDF fee as well. So the ask is, we'll keep setting up PFMPC bonds for the roads SDF so that we can meet the cash flow in that area. And then also possible internal loan, but probably a water MPC loan for the water infrastructure cash flow.
That's a lot. It's a lot for new people.
Kiss me again. You need a costume change. Like a wardrobe. All right, let's talk sales tax revenue diversity. So this is coming from one of our wings, which is a wildly important goal for the town. Because, you know, we have to have more acronyms. So our, one of our wildly important goals is to identify the optimal revenue diversification and develop some supporting strategies by June 2020. So that is why it's on the financial retreat agenda. The ask of council will be, how should we improve the diversification of our sales tax revenues? We, and the reason that, why we do this is because sales tax is one of our biggest drivers of what supports our local operations. It is also very volatile. So this graph is actually from all the sites that we did last year at our financial retreat and looking at the volatility of sales tax. You can see what happened in 2008 and nine, it's that dip that you see. And then the revenues really powered up out of the recession very well in Gilbert. But we did have a dip in 2008 and nine. If you look at the graph, you can see that the dip is really from the yellow segment, that bright yellow towards the bottom, which is construction sales tax. So after this experience, we changed some of our financial policies to save $5 million of that construction sales tax. We're always just going to count that as one-time money so that we don't have our ongoing operations relying on that. So that if there's a future downturn, that we will be better positioned to weather that. And that's really helping right now as we're looking at weathering some economic changes. But the retail side really continued to grow even through 2008, 2009 and on through. It stayed level for that period of time and then grew. Okay, so sales tax. And I gave you, those in the room have a paper printout, those who, the other council members, I think you have a other handout. This is just because it might be a little easier to read if it's in front of you and you can look at the graphs that you want. But for everyone else on WebEx, it's the same information that's on this slide for you. You may just have to get really close to your screen. So what this shows is comparison of sales tax for Gilbert versus some of our surrounding communities. This is actual sales tax from fiscal 19. If all communities were created equal, then we would say every community would have the same amount of sales tax per population. And it would be, it would look exactly like our population curve. We know that that's not the case. So the first one in blue, the top left corner is population. For Gilbert, Chandler, Mesa, Scottsdale and Tempe, you can see Gilbert, Chandler, Scottsdale all have, we all have about the same population. It's really even. Mesa is about double what the other three of us are. And then Tempe is just a little bit behind us in population. You can see that our sales tax is not exactly based on population. So if we go across over to the retail sales, you can see there are the different amounts. So blue represents the amount of sales tax that they would have if they had our same tax rates. So by, if it's a larger graph, if the graph is taller, it means that they have more volume happening in their city than we do in Gilbert. The orange piece of the graph shows the additional money that they get because their rate is higher than us. So it helps you see the difference between what they get because their tax rate is different and what they get because their volume is different of taxable sales. So you can see that we have about the same retail sales as Chandler, about the same tax rate. Mesa and Scottsdale and Tempe have more volume of retail sales happening in their communities. The bottom left, the restaurant and bar sales. So Gilbert, we always think we have a lot of restaurants in Gilbert. This graph actually shows that Chandler, Mesa, Scottsdale, Tempe all have a lot more sales happening in their restaurant industry. So we, if we took this and said by population, we actually have more capacity to have additional restaurants in our community and support it because these other communities are also supporting additional restaurants per population. The last one on this one, the use tax. So Gilbert has no use tax. That's a tax on basically online sales that don't have a nexus with the local community. So Gilbert has a rate, it's a zero rate. We'll get into that a little bit more later in this slide. But you can see that the difference for the other communities, they're getting five to $9 million more because they have a use tax as well as their transaction privilege tax or sales tax. This next slide shows, so top left, commercial rental sales. Gilbert has about $5 million, the others have $10 to $12 million. This is one of the areas that we noticed was concerning. We'll dive into that a little bit more in the presentation, but that's something to note. On residential, Gilbert has about $7 million from the residential sales tax, residential rental, and the other communities have $7 to $11 million. So although we get a lot of feedback from our community about the number of residential leases that we have in Gilbert, it is significantly lower than these other communities that are surrounding us based off of the sales tax that we're getting from that area. Just something to keep in the back of your mind as a difference there.
I have a chart I regularly send to residents who complain about density, which compares Gilbert to every other surrounding municipality in the East Valley. It shows the differences. I'd be happy to have other council members send that out as well.
We, we do have new residential housing, multifamily housing coming into the community. We are still well below our surroundings. Yes. Bottom left, the accommodation, which is our hotel sales. Gilbert gets less than $1 million, about $750,000. When you compare that to our other jurisdictions like Scottsdale, you can see they have both a higher rate and a lot higher volume. They have about $21 million. Given the impacts of COVID, I'm really glad not to be in that category right now. So we have a minimal impact. Whereas some of our other communities are experiencing volatility in a large segment of their sales tax. Then we're going to look at communication utilities or the last one on here. So you can see we are actually below on communication utilities compared to Chandler, which is our same population. And then Mesa, double our population is really double the communication utilities. So interesting things happening there. And then you can see the other communities like Chandler has an increased rate on this very stable source. So that's how they get some more stability in their sales tax base. Okay. We took this information, just like you've seen here, and brought it to an internal work group and brainstormed with tax, economic development, planning, budget, a whole bunch of all the smart people we could get in a room to say, what does this mean? How can we improve this sales tax stability for our community? And this group of people came up with seven ideas. We've heard more than that, but we picked our seven best ideas to talk with you about today. So we're just going to walk through them one at a time. The first one is commercial leases. And I mentioned that when we were going through them. That's the chart from the beginning. Gilbert is just low on the commercial lease side compared to what we would expect to see knowing what we do about our, the strength of our office segment, comparisons to our surrounding jurisdictions. And so we took that information. Economic development has access to CoStar data on what businesses are located here. And they gave that to the tax division. So tax has access to see a lot of non-public confidential data. So they are very limited by law in what they can release out about that information. So what they told us after they compared the CoStar data with the data that they're getting sales tax from businesses is, yes, there is a discrepancy. So we know that maybe not all of our businesses understand that they have to pay sales tax on their commercial leases. So one of the things that we would like to do is to continue to explore options and how do we help educate our business community and, and help them have, you know, that assisting and understanding what the rules are and be able to have compliance as appropriate. We know that this is a tough time, but we've been looking at this for a while. So just wanted to help improve the education and assistance in that area. We would expect tax can't tell us anything. But since I don't have access to their same information, I can make estimates. That is two to three, maybe four million dollars lower than what I would expect it to be. So there's, I would think, a significant amount of non-compliance in this area or businesses that just don't know that they're supposed to be paying sales tax on their commercial leases.
When you say it's low, is that low as compared to other municipalities or low based on national standard? What determines low?
Compared to the other municipalities. So we know that our our local rental, commercial rental supply is not half of Chandler's. But our revenue is half of Chandler's. So there's a disconnect there.
So how, how is Chandler or other communities capturing that?
Awesome. I believe that Hakan and Sarah are on deck to answer questions specifically about the reach-out efforts and things. I know they've done some reach-out in the past. And I made you a panelist. Is Sarah?
I'm in. Is Sarah on as well? I can't see there.
Redberry. Okay, she's on now. She's a panelist. Sarah is our tax manager, Hakan is our finance manager. I watch the revenues. They know the actual day-to-day of what happens with business communication. Sarah, do you want to, are you on?
Sarah, I've unmuted you.
Hear me?
Yes.
Yay, okay. Can you repeat the question?
Yes. So the question is related to the compliance of businesses. How do businesses in Chandler know that they need to do sales tax? But maybe when they start a business in or put a set up a lease in Gilbert, they don't know. And what are we doing to bridge that gap?
So some of that has to do with the fact that they were what we call non-program cities before. So they handled their own sales tax in-house. So there was a lot better setup and communication between your front desk when that commercial lease building came in to get some form of water or doing building plans, that sort of thing. It was communicated a little better. So upfront and from the beginning, there were, there were conversations about, well, you also need a sales tax license. And a lot of that just had to do with the fact that they handled it in-house in all of those jurisdictions that are on the board. And so some of that is just communication upfront. And so we've done a little bit of effort with trying to boost some of that communication ability throughout this past year so that we can get some of those people from the get-go instead of having to chase them from the back. That's part of it.
So when I heard you say sales tax, do you, is that, does the commercial rental tax fall into that category?
It does, and it is an uncommon tax. The tax of real property, both residential and commercial, is unique to transaction privilege tax. So oftentimes, if they're out-of-state companies, it is not something they've ever done before or ever had to deal with before.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And this is just a general comment. Before, one of the things I look at whenever we contemplate emulating another municipality's tax base. You know, I see low, but just as you gave the example of hotels, you said you were very happy that we did go down. But prior to COVID-19, you may have come through and said, we have an opportunity to take the tax base over here. And it tells determined to be the best practice in another municipality. I'm hesitant to emulate another municipality. So as we go through this, that's going to be the kind of deep dive I want to do about each one.
Yeah, I'm glad that we're not having the huge hit that Scottsdale's having at the moment. At the same time, the market always has ups and downs. You never know which sector is going to get hit. And so that's why diversification is so important, that we try and keep a good amount of mix in the different areas. Because the next five, 10 years from now, whatever the next economic cycle is, I don't know what the trigger will be. Maybe hotel is what's stable and restaurant or something else is, is the less stable one. So the more we can keep just that diversity helps us be prepared.
Well, and I know that it was a big deal for council member Cook when he was here to lower that to the 2.8. At some point, I'd like to discuss that again because we know that that tourism economy, you know, eventually is going to come out of this. And we want to be prepared to diversify and just try by lowering it and thinking that's going to attract tourists is really true, so.
Yeah, we actually have some more information on the bed tax on a later slide as well.
Oh, good.
So we just get hit all of the fun things today. Other questions about commercial leases before we move on?
I have a quick question. Did, have we done any analysis on what the cost of additional compliance is compared to? You know, obviously what, what we would you know, obviously what what we would see in increased revenues?
We have done some analysis on that. That's not analysis I can actually share. I have shared that with the Finance Director, and we've discussed some of the options that we can pursue.
So one of the rules around tax is that if you hire additional people, you're not allowed to set up benchmarks and say, you have to go and collect X amount of money to pay for your salary. So Sarah has some rules about what she can and cannot disclose, but I know, Sarah, you have an industry standard that you can disclose.
Yeah, so we, the industry standard is that we talk to or audit 1% to 2% of the population, and we currently do less than 0.5. So we're doing about half a percent.
Yeah.
So that's an area that we would like to look at some more and see what are options there are. Like I mentioned, not knowing any of Sarah's information, just me as a budget person looking at those sales tax graphs, it's a couple of million dollars that I think that we're probably low. An opportunity. Other questions? Okay. You leave a gun slide so I can advance. Here we go. Okay, the next one is commercial zoning. So this is a map of the commercial land in the area. The yellow represents commercial land that is non-vacant or already developed. The red represents commercial land that is undeveloped, yet to be developed. So when you compare that against population, population, we have maybe 24% remaining towards build out. Commercial land, we have about 33%. That's fairly common. Usually your households lead and then your commercial follows after the households come into place because you need people to serve before you can really build the business community. And Gilbert's hitting a really good stride with commercial development now, where we've been a bedroom community for some of our earlier years. So the the ask here would be, or the recommendation would be to continue to support the preservation of that commercial zoning as we have outlined in our general plan for preserve it for future commercial growth and opportunities so that we have that good build out mix when we get to that point. You know that? Let's talk accommodation or bed tax. So there's some interesting information here. If you look at the graphic onto your left, these are our sales tax rates. So 1.5 is our basic sales tax rate, and then we have the 2.8% of bed tax. Now, a portion of this is restricted and a portion is unrestricted. The first 2% of the total tax is unrestricted. That means the first half a percent of your bed tax is unrestricted, can be used for any purpose. Anything above that is restricted. It has to be used for tourism-related purposes. So what this means is if we have a growth in hotel nights, that means all of the revenue increases, both restricted and unrestricted. If we have a growth in the tax, bed tax rate, we will have additional restricted money that will need to be used for tourism-related purposes. And we do have additional purposes we could put that money towards. But I just want you to be aware of that nuance there. So when we look at the recommendation here, it's looking at creating some signature and destination events so that we can help increase the overall use of bedrooms and occupancy within the town of Gilbert because one day we're going to want to travel again and one day we're going to be in hotels again, we hope. Questions and thoughts on that? Okay. Heritage District. And thank you to Community Impact House for letting me steal their.
Kelly?
Yes?
My apologies. I didn't get off mute fast enough on that last one. Talk to me about the additional costs and some example events that are contemplated there that we would be creating.
Councilmember Taylor, this is Patrick. So we are working on that right now and had it as a wildly important goal for the current fiscal year. We have put them on hold in light of everything going on with COVID-19. But some of the models we're exploring are promoter run events. So it wouldn't necessarily be the town operating or hosting these or putting them on. But we would determine what are, from a signature perspective and a destination perspective, what are events that would be meaningful for our community in each category? And then solicit promoters who wanted to come in and basically do that turnkey of that for the town.
Okay, thank, thank you, Patrick. You know, before I support those recommendations, I'd love to just see the economics on that and how that balances out. Some of, some of this bed tax restricted money is, you know, really subsidizing private businesses. So that's not really appropriate. So we need to look at this really quick. I definitely supported Councilmember Cook's reduction of the, Scott, you and I have talked about that. So love to see the additional data on this. But thanks, Kelly. Appreciate you bringing this up as part of the discussion.
Yeah, in, so up until this point, we've been using.
I was just going to tell Jared, we, we also have a transportation advisory group that Dan and Glenn are helping us with, and that will help us also determine some of these events, I think Patrick was talking about, keeping an eye on these types of things like the hotel occupancy rates and all these rates and tax.
Yeah, we have different parts of tourism money. So the bed tax money up until this point has been used to offset debt service at Cactus Yards, not supporting any private businesses. And then moving forward, we had the discussion with council on using it for some CIP projects like some of the library.
A visitor center or education center preserve.
Yeah. Jared, were you referencing the Cactus Yards debt service? Is that what you were referencing?
No, in the, in the past, we, we, we used it for more general marketing. I know that's, that's typically what municipalities do. I think we're doing the best we can to restrict it to Cactus Yards right now, and I definitely support that.
We do have Prop 302 money that has been used for more general advertising and marketing, which is one of the restrictions for that type of money, but it's a different pot of tourism tax money than our accommodation or bed tax. I know it's hard to remember all of the different.
Sources.
Sources in tourism, but the bed tax doesn't go for any of the, any of the marketing or general. Other questions or thoughts on this? Okay. Heritage District. So we've noticed that there has definitely been an increase in restaurants in the Heritage District area. And just like we do with all of diversification, we'd like to see that area continue to develop in a wide variety of ways. Got some hotel, 9.1 acres has some different uses. We do have some entertainment with the Health Theater down there. Some, mostly the recommendation here is continue working to diversify these commercial uses so that area has a good economy base for when there are changes and things happen, which we put this into place even before COVID-19, and now it's even more relevant than it has been in the past. But just that encouragement to continue to look at diversity of commercial in the area, whether it's accommodation, entertainment, office, mixed-use residential, just to have a really good, healthy corridor in that area.
Hey, Kelly?
Yes?
Well, I'll just continue to be vocal that this is a very important point, right? We've brought uses into the downtown that have increased crime, which means we had to increase, we put a whole patrol down there. So we're effectively, you know, not really making a lot of money here. This year, we're probably going to be red, you know, due to the restaurant restrictions. So I'm glad you're bringing this point up because it's very important. My, I would just encourage us to look at adding the mixes that don't drive crime because then we're just not trading dollars here, put, you know, taking it from sales tax and giving it to PD. And, you know, on the net, we're not, you know, this isn't really helping the economy, and it's not really economic development. So I think we have great opportunities with that 9.1. I think that that's, that's great. But I'll just continue to remind us, this mix discussion's important, but it's really the mix that doesn't drive other costs. That is really going to be the secret to the success of the Heritage District. So thanks, thanks for letting me vocalize that.
Thank you. A good thing to keep in mind. And I think we have on our next one, yes?
I'm, I'm not going to let that go too long there, Jared. I think you and I are going to probably have to agree to disagree. When Deloitte came to Gilbert, not even located in the Heritage District, Heritage District for their site, the proximity to restaurants, the availability of creative space, the mix that we have, the university building, were all components that they utilized in their decision-making. I agree with you. We absolutely need more office in downtown Gilbert, and I'm glad to see that four-story building come into play. 9.1 acre site that we discussed last night in executive session will also have a substantial amount of office, and I think that's a really important component. And a huge difference you see between us and, say, Chandler or even Tempe, for that matter, is their ratio of office to residential. So we need to add more commercial uses at downtown. And we've done a, our economic development team has done an excellent job in bringing a really diverse mix of restaurants. Those restaurants are not necessarily driving crime. Just anytime you have more people in an area, there is going to be more crime. So if we want to disperse those people, I guess we don't have a Heritage District. But when you have a density of people going into one location, there is going to be an increase in crime. And anytime you have an increase in people, you are also going to have officers present. That's what we do with our schools and school resource officers and a couple other things. That's, that's, it's part of our effort. For the record, the Heritage District and that area, that beat was actually the number one beat for crime much prior to the Heritage District becoming what it is today. There was lots of discussion about that in the D-Dax, the Police Department's database. So, and a lot of that also was because it was an aging area of the community. So I'd be interested to see residentially if they're having a decrease in crime in that area. But maybe there's an increase in activity because of the quantity of people, including the quantity of stops and other things. So I, I'm not sure that the data that we're looking at is apples to apples data. And I'm really grateful that the economic development team, in conjunction with our business owners, are seeing so much success in that area.
Bill?
And to add on to that, just, just my experience with talking with literally thousands of people who are in the campaign process, the direction that the area is just, is going, just like Mayor was talking about, overwhelmingly supporting that, that correction and desire for the ideas that have been kicked around for that area. Not so much, you know, the late night stuff, but that afternoon stuff, the, the adjacent municipalities that come over. Again, my quote was, if you want to run for office in Chandler, come to downtown Gilbert. Because that's, we're tracking an awful lot of people into that area from recent stuff, wherever headed. It is for the family aspect as well. Jared, I'm, I'm right there with you on diversity down there. I, I think, and I, I know that, that Dan is too, that the more we can mix the entertainment, office, retail, that, you know, we're doing very well with the restaurants and we need that good mix. And I think that nine acres would bring that and additional development would bring that. But that will be a key in the downtown is the diversity and mix of initiatives.
All right. So this is a very exciting graph for me. This is the first time that we have had sales tax information based off of location within the town because this is a very manual process to figure this out for our tax department. And so this is the first year they've been able to give it to us. And it's fascinating to see where our sales tax is coming from. So this particular area that we want to highlight is the Northwest area, which is one of our more aging commercial areas. And it has 12% of all of our sales tax revenue comes from that corridor, that area, which is a significant amount. There is one thing to note on here. The gateway area you'll see is not yet reportable. So there are two reasons why Tax would not be able to report something by an area. If there are less than 10 businesses or if one business is more than 25% of the total. I'll let you decide if there's less than 10 businesses in the gateway area or if one of them is just very strong. So hopefully in the next year or so, the rest of the commercial strength in that area will even out and we'll be able to get some information. Right now, the gateway is reported in other, at 35 million at the bottom. And then you can see some that are reported townwide. Communication and utility are not reported by address, but by townwide, or the construction is also reported townwide. So some good, interesting information about where the strength of our community lies and which of those areas are growing versus maybe an area that might need some additional help or support, which we believe the Northwest Corridor is one of those important areas that might need some additional resources and support in that area. I'm going to be really excited next year when I can see what's the change over time? What are the areas that are growing versus the areas that might be staying the same or declining? So this is at least our first peek there, and it leads to the recommendation of exploring additional tools to help that Northwest area to preserve that 12% of our sales tax base that exists in that geographic area. The question is almost out, Councilmembers. I can see it written on your face.
Strategic zoning of areas for commercial development. I just want to make sure that we are very aware of where our revenue is coming from before we give it away.
What are we giving away?
Well, I just wouldn't, when we, when we evaluate, oh. I agree with this.
Well, you made a statement about giving something away, and I want to make sure that if, if that's the statement that's being made, that we're clear about what you're, what you're.
Well, I, I like the revitalizing the Northwest employment area, especially the light industrial areas. We just had my first council meeting, a baseline project, and whereas I do agree with the property rights aspect, I do also support the economic development team working with all of these areas. Again, innovating ideas to continue to develop a lot of, you know, what can we do to help make these very prosperous for employment and commercial opportunities? And I think that Dan's got a great plan for how he's working that, so that's exactly what you're talking here.
You're talking about caution in changing zones.
In other words, explore every opportunity to be able to develop these areas with the revenue that we have coming up before we consider other avenues that may not be as lucrative revenue.
Understood.
Is, is Dan on? Dan Anderson, Dan, can you talk a little bit about the ULI study in the Northwest Corridor?
Yeah, good, good morning. This is Dan, and I appreciate the opportunity to chat with you about the ULI study. Essentially, the ULI study brought together a number of developers, real estate executives, businesses and other groups that develop nationwide, certainly statewide, and in the Phoenix metropolitan area. They also had a very good understanding of Gilbert and the sort of positives of this corridor as well as some of the challenges of the corridor. And we worked with the Urban Land Institute to bring together an AZ TAP or an Arizona Technical Assistance Panel to provide insight and input to the strengths and challenges of the Northwest Corridor in Gilbert. The report is just about finalized from the Urban Land Institute and will be disseminating that to council and to the community. And there's a, a number of directives, objectives and tactics that they've identified to continue to look at as this corridor looks to redevelopment, looks to redevelop and looks to redevelopment for its future. I can certainly address specifics and go into a lot more detail, but I'll take a minute and just see if there's any questions at this time.
Thanks, Dan.
All right. Thanks, Dan. Ready to move on to the next area? Click on it so I can advance. Thank you. Okay, online sales. Don't get your blood pressure up too much. We have some good news here, so just hear me out. So online sales is a growing area of the sales tax base. And there's some information here from articles in the news that this is. And there's some information here from articles in the news that this is really one of the fastest growing industries. And it's taking now, as you can see, the online retailers, almost 12%. The second over from the right at the graph on the bottom. So really a fast growing part of the US economy and the sales that are happening. So as you're aware, in Gilbert, we have a 1.5% TPT transaction privilege tax. And we have a 0% use tax. So any of the online sales would be at a 0% rate. Except there's been a change that's happened very recently with the Wayfair case nationally that has changed some of that information and changed it for Gilbert. So as you see on the left, we have the TPT and the use rate. As of October 1st, 2019, so just a few months ago, there is now an economic nexus threshold. So if an online retailer has gross sales within the state of Arizona that equal the threshold and it changes over time. So around 200,000 per year, then they no longer are a use tax. They now have economic nexus and they need to pay the TPT tax instead. That makes sense? So what we're going to see, the impact is other cities are going to start to see revenue that has been collected under use tax move over and they will start to be reported under their retail sales, their TPT tax. For Gilbert, because our use tax has a rate of zero, we're going to see things start to move from zero rate over into the TPT rate and we will see some increased sales as it becomes part of our 1.5% sales tax. There couldn't be a better time for this to happen as a lot more people are doing online sales now. Amazon, for example, already has nexus because they have facilities here in the state. But other online retailers that may not have facilities here in the state and are doing more than $200,000 of total gross sales within the year will start to collect and remit that TPT tax to the state and the municipalities within the state.
Now, those taxes restricted or can be used?
They are unrestricted. They are part of that base that drives our basic operations here in the town. So that's how we pay for police fire parks.
When do we start seeing that and how much do we anticipate to see?
We have started to see it. Sarah, are you still on the line?
I am. It started in October and it's reported under the retail item on our public sales tax report. And it's roughly currently, and it will continue to increase as the rate, as the thresholds go down. But it is about 250,000 a month.
Good news. Thank you. I know that you did this brainstorming prior to the COVID-19 thing and I just want to give kudos to the businesses that have been paid for survival out of assessment. But I think that because of that, we're starting to see some of self effect, this over here. My question would be, is it, is it appropriate? Would you be willing to get together with economic development, this team over here, the, the team that brainstormed and capture what we're finding out now somehow integrate with our efforts with the Town of the Future initiatives that are doing for, for online and just where we're headed, be able to capture some of that and perhaps develop that idea with businesses that now see a possibility to transition online as a, another revenue source. I think there's some data to capture that could help develop this for, for future application.
Always happy to collaborate and help. These changes were done at state level. So nothing, no change that we made at a local level. We just get the benefit of this new, there was a legal case with Wayfair that changed how the state interpreted things.
That was a Supreme Court case, right? Wayfair was a Supreme Court case basically indicating that anyone who does online sales is responsible for a sales tax based on the state in which they're doing business, city. But they're being, that's a, that's not a version, long opinion.
I actually read it.
So then the state legislature took it up and had to make some changes. Municipal city tax code had to take it up and make some changes and this is the outcome.
Good news on that?
If I could.
Actually the expert on this, because she's worked on this for a while.
Amy, not an expert on it, but didn't have had some exposure from obviously what was going on at the state level. But I just want to highlight a kind of just how important this particular piece of revenue diversification is and the opportunity I think that we have at hand. And I don't want to understate kind of the degree in which cities and towns have been awash in new cash because of, of what happened on the state level. I think some numbers were preliminary without, but I pulled numbers from D O R back in January that showed just in October, November, we had collected around 416, 417,000 in, in new revenue. And I think what we had seen is that was under, just from a state level. Revenue projections were coming in much stronger than what we were even initially anticipated. And I think that is going to continue to grow. And so whatever we, we kind of come up with as, you know, all the pieces of the puzzle for what our, our tax compilation looks like. I think it's important to notate that this is, this is new money that we've never seen. Just like all the cities and towns are getting new money that they've never seen. So it should be balanced with, you know, other tax burdens. So just taking into consideration that we're, we're going to be making lots of money off of the new Wayfair decision. And to keep close track on, on how those revenues progress.
Yeah, for most of the other municipalities, their use tax, use rates and the TPT rate were the same. So it's just moving from one category to the other, not necessarily net new revenue for them for the most part. Gilbert is a little bit different because our use tax rate is zero, which is unusual.
And, and the compliance portion of this too. You know, on the slide before, it kind of shows what the thresholds are and how they phase in year to year, 2019, 20 and 21. And what they've found is there's literally thousands of businesses that should be remitting that aren't yet. And then just the general education and updating people's software systems and all that. And as that continues to increase in compliance, again, we're going to be capturing more of the, of the different businesses in the market. As it just becomes easier to comply and as, as the rate of compliance increases because the people understand that they have to do this now.
What I appreciate about this on multiple levels is one, is it much more level playing field for someone who has brick and mortar versus an online? Because if you look at it directly, a brick and mortar has far more investment into your community than does an online retailer. So this levels the field and then also from the use tax versus TPT. I fought against a use tax very openly in 2010, 2010. And still don't think that's the right thing for Gilbert. But this felt like an unfair application of the use tax versus the TPT. So I'm glad that there's been clarification there. So I actually think there's been wins on multiple sides. The, but the biggest win is the level playing field for the local business owner with a brick and mortar store.
Question about compliance. Does the state just ask for compliance?
We can do an audit. We can do audits and we do support on the audit side, but they, all of the taxes are remitted to them and then they send them back to us.
That was also a part of the Wayfair decision was states that have a streamlined sales tax system versus ones that don't. You know, obviously there's some states that are more ripe for being challenged for implementing online sales taxes. Ours was kind of somewhere in the gray area. We've got parts of it that are streamlined, parts of it are not. So it's, it is important that this is remitted through the state just from the simplification of compliance and being able to do this at all is kind of contingent on that.
Assuming D O R is properly funded, to be able to do that. Since we pay them more than half a million dollars a year to do this, you wouldn't think they could find the resources to.
Kelly?
Yes?
Just, just a couple of points here. Appreciate Amy's comment there. I hope this does give us an opportunity to look for ways to save the taxpayers a little bit, since this is new money. Not, not, not more of an opportunity to grow, grow other areas. I think that's, that's an important thing that we need to keep in mind. Second point is, it's, it's probably way too early to understand. You know, online has been cannibalizing your traditional brick and mortar retail for a number of years now. And it'd be interesting to see how much this is offsetting. You know, the, what we're losing with brick and mortar. But it'd be, it'd be good to start thinking about how we might be able to collect that information. So we can see, is, is this really truly an offset? Is it, and is it offsetting 100% or is it, you know, offsetting it only 60 to 70%, something like that? Because that might drive some of those decisions that you had earlier in terms of preserving commercial property and things like that. You know, you've heard me make the point in, in some council meetings that, you know, some density does allow this type of a tax to increase. Because it will provide more online transactions per square mile than we might have, you know, in other commercial applications. So I think it's way too early to understand that right now, but it's not too early to understand the framework about, about gathering data and what the zoning implications might be.
I will have to start looking at the data and seeing what we can pull. We're just starting to get the data. So exactly to your point, I think the recommendation here is to monitor the impact of this new economic nexus and see where that takes us. Just because it's new, it, we may not have a value in a use tax in the future. And this may provide the diversity that we need and, and we'll have to look at what data is available as this has more time and more history in the town and we can start to see what that revenue looks like. Tax structure, several of you have seen this before. So these are just the different tax rates for our neighboring jurisdictions that we were looking at. You can see Gilbert, we have the bed tax and then we charge 1.5% pretty much for everything. Chandler's a little bit different. They charge a higher rate on some of their more stable resources. So on their utility and their phone systems, they charge a higher rate. That gives them a higher amount of the stable taxes within their portfolio of sales tax. Mesa charges the same rate for all of the different categories, except they also charge the 2% on their wastewater utility. So in Gilbert, your sales tax on the water side of your utility bill, but not on the wastewater side. In Mesa, you have sales tax on both of those portions of your utility bill. And that's a way that they help provide additional stability is with that additional tax. Queen Creek just charges very similar to us, only a higher percentage rate on all of the different activities. Scottsdale charges a higher percent and they also do the additional of the wastewater tax. And then Tampe charges similar to us, a little bit higher rate on all those areas and quite a bit higher on the bed tax side. So you can see that all of the different communities have a different way of providing stability within their rate or within their sales tax base. So we just say continue to explore ways of diversifying that composition of how our tax base is and figuring out what's the best way for what we want and provide the stability that we need in our revenue sources.
Which does not necessarily mean that we're going to be increasing taxes, which was something that I think someone said along the way. It could mean that we lower one area and stabilize by a different mechanism. So I just want to make it really clear that the intention, at least as far as I can tell at this council, is not to increase taxes, but to perhaps flatten out some of the bumps and curves that we might see in another scenario.
Yep. The whole goal of the diversity is just to have that broad range in our portfolio. So that no matter what triggers the next or the next, or the next economic change, because there are economic cycles that we have good protection for whatever that may be. We'll just have this.
That's the beauty of having diversity. You can do that. That's what the story is.
Right. And you know, it probably doesn't need to set, but we are focused on the services you asked us to deliver and do it in the most cost effective way possible. And what revenue streams are necessary to do that. It's not an effort to look for new revenue streams to bring services in. If you ask us to implement a new service or raise the level of the service, then we'll understand what that cost is. And then how would you like us to seek funding that new service level? But this is just to understand vulnerabilities within our, our areas, revenue streams and what we can do to hedge against unknown risks that, that come along from time to time in cycles.
These are the seven areas that we looked at. I think we've had good discussion on all of them, but if there's any other questions or discussion, that's all I have.
Kelly?
Yes.
Got to move on. Sure Scott will be here in just a second. Recycling costs and fees. Jessica and Kelly.
Good morning. How's my audio?
You sound great.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Wearing one of those cheap iPhone headsets. So hopefully it works okay. I think we're talking about it not being very good for webex. Hopefully it works okay. So thank you all for continuing to listen to the challenges we face with our recycling program. I will try really hard not to get us any further behind schedule regarding the agenda for today. But I will be, if you could go to the next slide, please. I will be sharing, starting with resident feedback. The residents are always the forefront of what we do. Recycling is very important to our community. We see a lot of support for that. And so I'll be sharing some, some of that resident feedback we've gotten. Also going into some of the background on our recycling challenges. This is a follow-up to presentation that council saw at our fall retreat last October. Both for our new council members in the room and online, wanted to share a little bit of the background of why we're here as well as some of the impacts and challenges we've seen related to the recycling market. And then as, again, as a follow-up to the, to the fall retreat, some of the cost saving measures that we have undertaken over the last year in order to try to offset the rising cost of recycling and what our next steps are and the ask of council today. Next slide, please. So from a resident feedback perspective, last September, we did a survey of our residents regarding our recycling program. And we received over 5,000 responses, which at the time was the most responses that any survey the town had sent out to, to its residents. So we got really great response rate to that. And the question was, would you still participate in the recycling program if there was an additional fee on your monthly utility bill? 60% said yes, definitely would support that. That's over 3,000 of those respondents. And about 20% of them were unsure, wanted to learn more and the other 20% said no. And of the ones that are unsure and wanted to learn more, some of the questions that came up were related to, are you just to have the recycling go to a landfill? You know, is it really getting recycled? Where's the money going to go? And so we feel with some additional outreach and education, a lot of those questions could be, could be answered and supported. Next slide, please. So some other great feedback we got a couple of months back, our digital team did a really great recycling Instagram story. I tried to have the video on here, but as a result of some technical difficulties, we chose to, to remove it. But it is still posted on the town's Instagram page. And it's a really cool behind the scenes video that they did of the sorting facility over in Surprise. And also did some background on a, our contamination audit that we do every quarter for our, our two different vendors. And so some of the feedback we got from this, they, the community really loves these behind the scenes looks. They love the recycling. They thought it was very insightful. They, they saw the video and it really made them want to recycle right and recycle better. And that contamination rate and recycling rate is really important because it helps us reduce our costs. The cleaner our recyclables are, the, the less that we end up paying in these two are, to our two different vendors. So I highly encourage everybody, if you haven't seen that story, go ahead and watch it. It's really cool and it just shows you kind of step by step, the insides of those, the facility, the recycling facility. It is, it's pretty impressive, the amount of work that goes into sorting the recyclables. Next slide, please. So additional feedback we got, particular. So additional feedback we got particularly around the survey, when we sent the survey out at the end of last year, was things like, please keep the recycling program. We need to be responsible for our planet, even if it needs spending more money. People wanted to be educated on how to recycle right and make sure that the recyclables are being reused in a sustainable way. We can't not recycle. Please keep it going. Just really overall seeing a lot of support for our cycling program. And even though this survey is a few months old at this point, even as recently as just a few weeks ago, when we were renewing our recyclable contracts, we saw a great support and commentary regarding people willing to pay the extra fee in order to continue recycling for, you know, the sustainability factor. Next slide, please. So some of the background and the reason that we're seeing the increase.
Just to be fair, I did see some comments of individuals who were not in favor of us continuing recycling and telling us to put it in landfill. I just didn't want that to be, I mean, I realize a resident survey is going to tell us more information than social media listening in a lot of cases, or at least, you know, make that, put that into an assistant format for us. But I know that there were some individuals who said, nope, put it in the landfill. I don't want to pay anymore. And I just wanted to make sure we were only painting one picture.
Sure, yeah. And even with the survey, you know, we had 20% of the people that surveyed said, no, I don't want to pay an extra fee, just landfill it. So there's definitely, you know, people that are on both sides. But one of the reasons, some background that we're seeing, the increased recycling costs is a result of changes that China made to their allowable contaminants in our recyclables. So in 2018, China reduced the allowable contaminant level in recyclables that were sent to them, that they would purchase, to 0.5%. And previously they had accepted up to 50% contamination rates in those recyclable materials that they were receiving from the US. And that's something that had not only a local impact, but naturally while it impacted all public municipalities, all private waste haulers that were selling their recyclables to China. Next slide. So Gilbert-specific challenges that we have, we utilized two different recycling vendors, United Fibers and Waste Management. Those are both private facilities that we pay to process our recyclable material and then sell it for us on the market. And what we're seeing is kind of impacts on both sides, where we're seeing increased processing costs because of the need to reduce the contamination rate to an acceptable level. And then also just a decrease in the commodity sales prices. And so what we're seeing for fiscal year 20, which is our current budget years, we had originally budgeted about $370,000 for costs associated with our recycling program. And as a result of the changing market conditions, we're expecting that to be just over $1 million now. Next slide. So the recycling market is still primarily local, but there are some national sales of our commodities as well as international. And right now, the market is basically aluminum and tin, glass, cardboard, newsprint, plastics, and then steel as well. And nationally, primarily it's the plastics that are sold to California and Plac in the Midwest. And then internationally is Malaysia and that's cardboard. There's about 25 local vendors that buy a variety of our different commodities. So we do still have a little bit of diversity in where the materials are being sold. But there's, the market is, the market is shrinking and the types of materials that are being purchased is also shrinking. Next slide, please. So from a commodity price standpoint, these are our two different vendors. United Fibers is the top line and Waste Management is the bottom line. And you can see kind of a decrease, this is for the last two years, a decrease in the selling price per ton for each facility. Waste Management was kind of more of a gradual change. United Fibers, we were always getting a little better pricing from them. And so we were taking more of our materials to them. And then in July of 19, they actually lost a paper contract that was paper being reused to make insulation. And so they had a really good price on that particular commodity that went away in July of 2019. So we saw a significant decrease in the commodity sales prices from that facility. Next slide. Additionally, when we talk about the processing fees, there's three different lines on here. The red line is what it costs us to dispose of materials in the landfill, just as trash. And then the blue line again is United Fibers and the green line is Waste Management. And those are the processing fees that we see for disposing of anything that is not recyclable. So as you can see, it costs us more to recycle at this point than it costs us to just take it to the landfill. Next slide. And historically, we had always seen revenue from our recycling program, which helped offset the operating costs of the total, you know, solid waste program of up to, you know, close to $1 million a year at the peak. And you can see in 2018, we saw a significant drop off where we only saw a couple hundred thousand dollars in revenue. So in 2019, we actually estimated that we weren't going to see any revenue because we saw that that market starting to change. And we did actually end up seeing a cost associated with the recycling program. And then in 2020, we did estimate we would have disposal costs based on our 2019 numbers. And those costs have just continued to increase as the market has continued to decline. Next slide, please. So just kind of as a summary, the actual numbers, you can see from FY 18 to 19, we went from a revenue standpoint to an expense standpoint. In FY 20, we're expecting the cost to be about $1 million. And in FY 21, maybe slightly higher, just as a result of volumes with growth. Next slide. So some of the measures that we've taken over the last year to try to reduce our operating costs and offset those increased recycling costs, are modifying our collection schedule. Last year, we went through a rezone where we went from four-day service to five-day service. That allowed us to reduce overtime and other operational costs. We streamline our collection routes by doing some turn-by-turn routing to minimize the mileage that was being driven. We were able to improve our equipment maintenance with our fleet department by giving them better access to our vehicles by having about 20% of each vehicle or of all the vehicles available for them to work on each day by having less routes, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We reviewed the recycling contracts and were able to minimize the increases that we saw compared, especially when you look at the other, some contract terms that some of the surrounding communities. And then we've also increased our outreach and education to help reduce our contamination rate, which also helps our overall cost to the recycling program. Next slide. So as part of the rezone, to reduce the overtime that we were seeing our drivers accumulate as a result of just having heavy routes and two large routes, lots of cans on each route. We've split those out into smaller and were able to reduce our overtime by about 33%, which was just over $100,000 in savings from FY 18 to FY 19. Next slide. We also were able to reduce some of our operating costs related to mileage and overtime as well by doing literal turn-by-turn routing to make sure that every mile was accounted for and planned for on each route through neighborhoods and then to the different transfer stations. Next slide. And from a fleet maintenance standpoint, we were able to reduce our overall parts and supplies repair and maintenance costs because they are able to do more preventative maintenance on each of the vehicles. As I mentioned, 20% of all of our fleet is available each day for them to work on. Instead of, in the four-day schedule, we basically were using every truck every day. And we just didn't have service on Wednesday. So they were trying to do maintenance on dozens of solid waste trucks in a single day. And that wasn't really achievable. And so we've been able to reduce several hundred thousand dollars worth of maintenance costs from last year to this year as a result of those changes. And then as a result of the turn-by-turn routing and just overall fuel price decreases, we've been able to see some savings there as well. Next slide. So just graphically showing you the equipment maintenance cost savings that we've seen over the last three years. You can see FY 18 to 19, they were pretty consistent. And with the changes we've made, FY 20 estimates are moving in the right direction, which is down. Next slide, please. So some of the other, one of the other things we did, we renegotiated our recycling contracts. As you know, that was where at council a couple of weeks ago, we were able to limit the increases to single-digit percentages compared to prior years where we had seen other, the prior year, we had seen increases related to the processing. One of the other things we're also able to do is historically, we had taken the majority of our materials to United Fibers because we were getting much better prices from them. But as a result of the market shifts and the contract changes, Waste Management and United Fibers are pretty even now. And so we were able to go to Waste Management and be able to take more material to them, which will help us on the operational side, be able to kind of split the town in half and take half of it to one mind half of it to the other, which will help us minimize our operational costs as well. Next slide. The other thing that we've done is related to our increased outreach and education. We do, we have inspections that we do quarterly with our recycling in order to increase outreach prior to our recycling audits, which is where we have the material sorted and they determine our contamination rates. And then we get charged based on those contamination rates at the United Fibers and Waste Management facilities. We had a lot of great outreach happening with the schools when they were in session. We increased our digital communications by creating some signage on all of our vehicles that kind of.
Jessica, in the interest of time, sorry, we only have about 30 minutes left.
Okay.
Have three more agenda items.
Thanks, okay.
In the time, I'm just going to ask, we've done a lot of cost-saving measures. Carry on.
We have, okay, forward. So total, yeah, total, we've seen several hundred thousand dollars in cost savings as a result of these improvements. Next slide. We also did zero-based in FY 19, which had some additional cost savings. Next slide. And historically, the last two rate changes on the environmental services have been decreases in 2012 and then again in 2018. So we've gone, you know, we've gone down by about $2.50 over the last 10 years. Next slide. However, as a result of the increased recycling costs, we do need to have a way to fund that. And with all of the cost-saving measures we've been able to do, we do believe that FY 21, we have enough fund balance left in order to continue the recycling program without a rate increase. You'll see that's the first set of bars on the graph. But next year, we would be then fall below our minimum fund balance if we didn't do some type of a rate increase in order to pay for these recycling costs. And so the recommend or the request is to complete a rate study in FY 21 for rate, potential rate implementation in FY 22 to close that operational gap. Excellent. And a lot of, you know, we showed you this before as well. The cities across the valley have done a variety of different things in response to recycling challenges. Several of them have stopped recycling altogether, most recently Mesa. Several others have increased their fees in order to offset those costs. And then some of them have also streamlined their recycling programs to only allow very specific items to continue to improve their contamination rates. Next slide. So short-term is just to continue the recycling program as is. We do have sufficient fund balance to continue the recycling program through FY 21 without a rate change. And then do the rate study to determine exactly what that increase would need to be in order to continue the program. Next slide. Long-term opportunities, we are exploring a partnership right now with Deloitte and the Institute for
I can't remember either.
The Institute for Digital Progress. And one of the other requests we have, Deloitte has been pursuing some funding opportunities for doing a study that would basically look at sustainable and innovative ways to manage waste and recycling that would draw on their experience both nationally and internationally. And there is a grant opportunity that we have to be able to apply for in order to get funding that's specific to that line of study that we would need to bring to council for approval to do, to apply for the grant. But we haven't started that application yet because we didn't want, they have offered, Deloitte and the institute have offered to assist us with that grant, but we didn't want to commit time to it if it wasn't something we were interested in pursuing. So that would be another ask, kind of an informal, yeah, bring us, bring us the request to apply for that grant so that we can help facilitate that partnership and look at alternative ways to manage our waste long-term. Next slide. And part of the long-term solutions that we'd be looking at is alternatives to the current solutions and recycling facilities that we have because there's only a few valley-wide. And two of those are owned by the city of Phoenix. And then the other three are privately owned. And so there's nothing in the East Valley in general that is, that is a municipal facility that could potentially be an option for us if it's something we wanted to partner with our other valley communities. Next slide. Additionally, our next steps are going to be just to continue with our contamination rates. The last study that Digital did the story on, our contamination rate went from 16% to 10 and a half%, which is really one of the best numbers we've ever had. And that will help us to reduce our operating costs over the next year, at least for the next quarter, because that's done quarterly. But we should hopefully, that improvement contamination should hopefully be able to offset some of the increased contract increases that we saw that just went into effect. And then, as I mentioned, do the local recycling market study. Hopefully that partnership with Deloitte will provide us some valuable insights and direction into future opportunities. Next. So the ask is to, for council direction to conduct a fee study in FY 21 on residential solid waste rates. And then hopefully also get a thumbs up on bringing that grant application to the council for approval to apply for the grant, which then we would also come back if we were successful in receiving it and ask for council's acceptance of that money. And that's it.
Remind you what the is all about? Is that awesome?
Okay.
So actually, we have good news. The question of the ask today is, should we begin to pare back some of our funding strategies based on the success we have? We have five items that we've been working on in our funding strategies that are adopted by policy. And we're going to talk about maybe paring those back. So PSPRS report, one of the things you need to know is the report that came out for June 30th, 2019 is wrong. We sent them 10 other million dollars. One of their accountants made a rookie mistake and fixed the error when we pointed it out in fiscal 20 instead of fiscal 19. So it didn't make it on the report. We had really good talk with Mike Townsend, the chief administrative officer. And he was very good about looking into it. It will get fixed on the next report. The money is there. But what I'm going to show you in this presentation is what it should have been with a little bit better accounting practice at the time. So this is what really our assets should be. And we'll see it on the next, it'll get caught up next time. So assets are $10 million higher. What that means is we had a 10.6% decrease in our unfunded liability with the money that we sent them last fiscal year. So very good news. In context, what that is, we decreased, pretty much none of our other peers did. We are making substantial progress in our unfunded liability, which is great news for Gilbert. This is the historical picture. You can see Gilbert staying very level. Chandler is working really hard on theirs. They're seeing it pretty flat. Some of the other communities are aware and working on it, but still not able to pull it to a flat progress. Mesa now has $650 million that they own unfunded liability. Phoenix is over $3 billion that they own unfunded liability. I'm glad to work in Gilbert. Okay, police and fire combined, so we are now at eighty percent funded, which is fantastic. With the money that we spent on July of this year, we should be in the eighty eight percent range. That was the estimate before the market went a bit haywire. One of the nice things is there is a smoothing, so any of the market losses that are, happened this year because of changes, they will be smoothed over seven years. So we'll see what happens with our report next year and at some point, we hope the economy will recover and will make up the losses, just like we hope that's happening in our own retirement portfolios. We'll see what happens with PSPRS, but some good news here. We should be fully funded if things are on track in the next year, so with what we send in fiscal twenty. So based off of that good news, I'd recommend that we start to back off some of our strategies, some of those. So these are the five strategies, sending our contributions on July one, remitting the budget amount for both the employee and the employer. We send an additional two million dollars every year and then we take any of the revenue that came in above what we projected or money savings from expenditures coming in below what we had projected. The following year, we send that as a one-time payment. And then we budget using the highest historical contribution rates, not what our actual contribution rates are according to the reports from PSPRS. So that we figured the highest ones already in our budget, so let's keep it there. What we're talking about is let's wait and not send those payments on July one. But maybe see when the timing during the year is in the best interest of the town to be able to send that. So we'll still budget for it, we'll still be in the budget, but waiting to see what's happening before we send that over to PSPRS. And then sending the actual required amount according to PSPRS, that's what I recommend that we permit every pay period, which is the normal practice. Transition the two million dollars into one-time funding, especially as we're so close to being funded that that doesn't need to be considered ongoing money into the future any longer and we can use that ongoing capacity.
When you say that Kelly, you're saying we're going to pay the two million dollars not from our ongoing budget funds, but from our, what we consider to be our one-time budget funds. Not that we're only paying it one time, even though that's true too.
Yes, okay, so we want to make sure that we conservatively protect our ongoing revenues. And then we only, we spend ongoing funds only out of that to make sure that we're not supporting our ongoing operations with one-time money.
That'll make more sense when you have your budget.
And then discontinue the under over payments, actually had this on here well before, before COVID happened. But we definitely need that extra cushion to provide a lag and we can use the money for our, that we talked about in the LRIP earlier. Depends on this, I know that's a little dense. So based off of these recommendations, is it okay if we go ahead and update our formal policies? They'll come to council and we're legally required to have a policy on our unfunded liability strategy because not all of the communities are as well positioned as we are and it went through the list. Any questions on the phone? Okay, we're going to be talking general fund debt, so debt that we pay for with our, basically sales tax money and general fund is the account that has police, fire, public or parks and rec are basic operations. So this is not including any of the debt that is property tax or any of the debt that would be associated with our water, wastewater funds. This is just what we pay for out of the general fund, one portion of the town. So should we pay off general fund debt early is the question. This is what our general fund debt looks like, the different colors represent different bond issuances for different purposes. Like the green and the red are public safety admin building, property and evidence building, some of South Area Service Center, different things like that. Then the blue is some land and other things that we did and then the purple is the university building. And so the length of the line is the time that we'll be repaying it. And then the height is the amount of money that we pay for each of those purposes. So as you can see, our final payment for the green and the red debt is next fiscal year, which is fantastic. What I would propose is that we're used to paying about eight million dollars a year in our general fund towards our debt service, towards making our debt service payments. So if we just had general fund continue to pay that and we set aside that additional money in a sinking fund or in a separate fund to be able to pay debt early when we're able to, that would be an option here. Unlike your home mortgages, you can't just directly put the money towards paying off the debt, you have to wait for certain windows of time. We don't have a window of time on the university building debt until July of twenty twenty six. So we would just have to set the money aside, keep it there in reserve and then in July of twenty twenty six, then we would be able to pay it towards the university debt. That's where that window opens. So if we kept paying it towards then and then continued to pay, we would be able to pay off that university debt seventeen years earlier and fifteen million dollars less in interest. So that is my recommendation is that we would start to set aside that money, keep it at eight million dollars per year planned in the general fund. And then pay off our university debt early when we can.
And just to clarify, those are unrestricted dollars. So if for some reason there was a catastrophic event in Gilbert between now and twenty twenty six, you could actually dip into that fund and utilize those dollars for another purpose. But obviously, our intention is to keep that in an account to pay off.
Yes, or we could move, it's about three million dollar capacity, so we could decide that we didn't want to set that money aside and move the debt service down to five million dollars, we'd have three million dollars of extra capacity in the general fund that we could use if something more pressing came up.
And just to kind of talk about what Jared was talking about earlier with TBT funds, we have extra money coming in. This would be something that I would, the application of TBT funds, setting that aside and be able to help pay on debt. Just a comment on how, it's fresh in my mind that we have money to be putting in the revenue.
I think we have to be careful with saying the word extra money.
That's true.
There are enough uses in this town, like we could put every single available dollar into road repair and replacement and spend far more than what we actually take in. So the, the notion of extra money, we're just trying to constantly prioritize, right? And, and future councils will make determinations about what that is. I think what we're saying, we can't bind, we want to take that chunk of money that we had reserved for debt payoff and we're going to use that instead to build the world's biggest water park or something. Like they could do something like that and at that point, not like, there's nothing we can do about it. But I think what we're doing is we're setting the intention that today's council wants to pay off debt early.
Is if we keep earning money and spending money in the same general pattern and then we can plug things in for things that we know will be different, where does that leave us on the balance into the future? So what you see, the lines going up are the expenditures, the green line at the top are the revenues and they're actually pretty well balanced between the two. So we have a list of the changes that happened from last year.
Kelly?
Yes.
Sorry, this is Jared, I don't see anything on the slides. Okay, thank you.
It is coming up and when you see it, you'll be able to see some of the changes that we updated are the actual revenue and expenditures, staffing forecast, updated retirement benefit rates and extended the graph another ten years because we were starting to get close to that twenty thirty time period.
Got it, thanks.
Yes. We have different options of what we can look at. In fact, when I updated the model pre-COVID, we put, I put in just what if there was a recession? So now I'm really glad that lover's in there this year. So if we said, what's the recession year, I did move it up, I had guessed twenty twenty three. If we guessed twenty twenty two or twenty twenty one now, then, then that might be different. Overall, it looks like Gilbert is really well balanced into the future. We do have the ability in twenty twenty two, you can see there's a recession kind of built in a five million dollar loss. We can plug in, you want to plug in for me? Ten million instead for the sales tax loss for recession, the one below that? I believe you can put.
It's like you're breaking, you're breaking your spreadsheet.
It's dynamic, this is how I do some of my thought processes on, okay, how much flexibility and wiggle room do we have built in?
Which by the way, for those, this model is designed, exists in other places, someday there's going to be an IP option for Kelly.
I used to build these when I was in my consulting years for different communities.
Pretty awesome.
Most cities don't want to know the answer. They probably don't want to know.
Yeah, so if the recession is a lot less and then it takes us, you know, kind of our, our regular growth, about five million dollars a year growth, then that could definitely impact us if it's something less than that, we're, we're well situated. This does include putting in, starting to do general fund LRIP transfers to be able to better support our repair and replacement needs out of the general fund. This does include the early payoff of the debt that we just talked about. Overall, really pleased with Gilbert's financial future and, and what it's looking like. We'll continue to update this next year when we have more data on this unfolding economic change and how that might impact us. But I feel like we've got some good wood over and built in here to adjust. Do you have certain things you want me to plug in and play with or?
Where's Victor when we need it? Victor loved this.
But is this the graph I heard about?
Try this. No, you're thinking of a red graph, no one likes that one except for Victor. I'm just teasing. All right, I know. So you have twenty twenty two as your session year, put that in twenty twenty one just for our.
Yeah, you just have to write it.
Can I?
The first thing that happens is we close it open again, so you can't break anything.
All right, so you can see how we dipped right there. And how come it says zero percent sales tax?
So you can do either a percentage or a dollar amount.
Oh, so we did.
Like do the dollar amount because the percentage continues to grow and by the time you get to the later years, that compounded percent is unrealistic. We've had more like seven to ten, seven to nine million dollar increase here over here for the last five or six years. So five million is a really conservative number for a long term.
Hey, anybody want to play with that?
Kelly?
For me than you.
Jared wants to play, okay Jared.
I see the salary growth model is three percent for non-sworn. Is, is the sworn around three percent or what are you modeling the salary growth for sworn personnel?
Because sworn has their step increases, then that's built on the backend instead.
So roughly, what, what, what roughly is their percent increase in that step and grade model?
They have steps of five percent is the difference between their steps and then they have.
But there's years of ser, like there's a formula, it's like years of service and rank and there's like a bunch of different pieces of that, right?
Yes, true, so.
It's not just every year you get.
Another way which Gilbert is different, we don't have step and grade for the organization as a whole and that's almost universal in government. For our sworn personnel, fire and police, they do have a five percent step that upon a successful evaluation in that fiscal year, they'll get a step increase which points to five percent and then there's different grades for the different levels. Patrolman, sergeant, lieutenant, the rest of the organization is paid for performance and it's based on factors in the local economy, cost of living increases and that. So Kelly's used three percent as a general growth indicator in that area for all the non-sworn personnel in the organization. But that could go slightly up or down depending on your evaluation and, and the given economic conditions.
But the sworn salary growth is, is that also in that salary stack there at the very bottom, the dark?
Yes, it's in the stack, it's just not controlled by this lever. I could create a, a separate lever to control that one, I just haven't.
No, that's okay, I was just wondering where, where it was because it looks like that was just non-sworn, so thank you.
That's awesome, Kelly, seriously, always items. Kelly has gotten us the information via email on the SDF revenue, so that was from last week. We want to do some tours of child help and advocacy centers and I'll also add, when we can, doing all of the tours for the three new individuals and any other council member that wants to participate in. Having an SDF primer, especially particularly for our new individuals or anyone else who wants that, making sure that there's clarity on how and when we collect those. The state legislate, the legislature controls some of that and then also how we, with our new, how we just completed the study. I think that'd be really helpful for the SDF study that we did last year. Yeah. Anything else that we need to follow up on?
Hey Jen? Hey, I got some good information from staff just on the costs of the advocacy center. Patrick, I can't remember if that was sent out to everyone, but that might be good for all of council to get some of that follow-up information I was asked about.
Okay, we'll add that to the follow-up list. Any other questions from council?
I want to state. Can I just say something?
Yeah.
So as a new council member here, I can't express how impressed I am with all the lines of service, their directors, their staffs. The level of detail that I've seen in the last couple of presentations, the last couple of days we've done this and how diligent everybody is about details, saving money, repurposing resources and the enthusiasm. I'm passionate about my job and not everybody in my office shares that. And I feel like so many people here are passionate about their jobs and I'm just glad to be a part of it in some way. It's inspiring and I wish more people in Gilbert or citizens could see this because I think that they would feel so much better about the talent they live in. I mean, really to see our statistics against, to see our statistics against other communities, our debt and, and our tax rates. It's, it's really impressive and I think it's something that I know I'll be sharing with, with others and I have the opportunity. But I just want to thank staff for all the hard work. Gonna give that to you guys. That's what I cut you guys for.
Thanks, not a problem. Yeah, definitely feel the same way, just realized this is my last financial retreat. I know, I got time to spend for a second. I, I've been really grateful for these because we used to do this piece mail, like little pieces of our multiple council meeting study sessions. And I was really grateful for the opportunity, we have to come and look at this in one big picture because I think it helps us make better decisions in the long run to see how all the pieces fit together. So thank you and thanks to staff because I know it's a happy lift right in the middle of the budget. Appreciate it. Patrick, did you want to close us out with anything?
Of course, thank you, Councilwoman September for that. I, I agree, I think our staff does an exceptional job. And one thing I've always been proud of is we never rest on what we did last year. We just always keep looking forward, pushing forward, making sure we're asking the right questions, analyzing and looking at the right data. So we can make the best decisions for the citizens of Gilbert. It's a pleasure to work with all of them, so thank you for that. We go right from this into budget, Kelly's got a ton of information for you. We do have some different tiers and how we're going to approach the uncertainties of COVID nineteen, how that impacts the town of Gilbert and built in some triggers so that we can make decisions, be wise with our dollars, get fiscally responsible and make some decisions as we get data coming in. Because right now, nobody has data on what the impact of the community is, we can guess. But we're all going to start getting our sales tax collections for March and May and even March doesn't tell the whole picture because that's only when it really started to take hold in the state and executive orders put in place. So that starts immediately, so we apologize for wearing you out going right from this to that. But we look forward to your questions, Kelly and her team and the departments, departments have done an excellent job in building a budget. We believe responsive to the needs of the community. So thank you for finding a second link quickly and diving right into that. Thank you for all of your questions with this retreat. Thank you to the staff for all of with, I think this is the first time, but I know this is the most information on the biggest areas of impact. Well, I know this is the most information on the biggest uh, areas of impact of our corrupt finance retreat and then having to do it in a disconnected format utilizing technology. Thank you to Valerie, everybody, Nikki, well, make sure we did this, Joey and everybody that, that isn't in this room, very few people are in this room actually. But um, this was a, an awkward way to do it and um, get um, on top of everything else that's going on right now. So thank you and thanks for your uh, participation and support of us.
We have a great leader in Patrick, so thanks to everybody. All right, have a good day.